Good afternoon. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that applies to property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever our property to create new lots. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer, tablet, or phone. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator one person at a time. We ask that you also mute your devices until you are called on to speak. Those participating by video appearance will be temporarily upgraded to panelists when your item is being held. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted speaking time. At all other times, your video will be disabled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. Those participating through WebEx are not allowed to use Share Screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist's role if you fail to respect this instruction. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the committee on an application must fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email address, because the Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto local appeal body will be sending notifications and appeal updates by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed the rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Appeal instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. With respect to hearing procedure, I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. When where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five minutes. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and committee members cannot accept materials at the hearing. When addressing the committee, please clearly state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first, and will make a presentation to the committee on the application. Please note that the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. Then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room, and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they've finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant agent has an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion. The application will then be taken into committee for a decision. So just to begin with, does anyone have any conflicts to declare for this afternoon? Mr. Marciari?
Through you, Madam Chair. I have a conflict with application number nineteen.
Okay.
Which is seven eight eight Marley Avenue.
And the reason for the conflict?
I know the applicant.
And then, Mr. Secretary Treasurer, do we have any, we have a deferral, I believe?
Through you, Madam Chair. We have one deferral at the two P M. time slot. It's numbered fourteen, one fifty Rose Lawn.
All right. Number fourteen, one fifty Rose Lawn. Do we have the applicant with us or online? Not sure which person it is on the list. I take it Nathan Mock?
Did you hear me?
Yes, you could be a little louder.
Oh, oh, hi, yes. Now it's better?
Yes.
Oh, good afternoon, Committee Chair. My name is Nathan Mock, and the address is two fifty Shields Court, Unit seven, Markham, Ontario.
Okay.
Yes, we are requesting the deferral for one fifty Rose Lawn Avenue, because we have received the transportation review last week, twenty-seventh November, and we are now revising our design and respond with the review.
Okay. We do have two neighbors listed. I believe they're online as well. Could we hear from them?
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, yes, I'm one of the neighbors.
Okay. Are you Cyprian Tak?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Uh, one fifty four Rose Lawn.
All right, thank you. So the applicant has requested a deferral of the application. Do you have any concerns with the deferral?
Uh, not in the deferral, no, but my issue was not at the front of their house, but more on the other project they have at the back of their house.
Okay. So that will be heard when the application comes back if we are to approve the deferral?
That works.
Okay, thank you. All right, can we have the other person on?
The other person is also the same address.
Oh, I see.
And not online, so probably.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm talking for her.
Okay, thank you. So, all right, thank you very much. All right. Let's take this into committee. Ms. Sankar.
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. I put forward a motion to defer this application, signee die, to afford the applicant a moment to revise and inform the neighbors.
Thank you very much. Do we have a second or? It was actually for transportation comments, Ms. Sankar, but they could add the neighbors?
Okay, I thought I heard him saying that they wanted to do a number of revisions as well.
I think it was to review the comments that Transportation submitted, so.
Yeah, not a problem.
Great, thank you. Second, Mr. Niffel, were you offering? Thank you. All in favor of the motion? That is unanimous. Your applicant, or your request for deferral has been granted. All right, you're welcome. Let's go back to item thirteen. Okay. Why am I? One moment, I just have to catch up with my screen. Item thirteen is fifty Lurgan Drive. And this is an application for a new detached dwelling with a rear platform. The variances are for parapet height, height for front and rear exterior main walls, number of stories, height of first floor of established grade, building length, area of rear second-story platform, east side yard setback, west side yard setback, and lot coverage. On file, we have minutes from August fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, a revised requested variances list from October twenty-first and from November twenty-seventh, supporting material, presentation, a community planning report, urban forestry memo, and a letter of objection from forty-eight Lurgan Drive and the previous agenda package. Is there ever applicant with us?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and fellow members. Alexander Overholt, speaking from eleven forty Queensway in Tobago.
Thank you, Mr. Overholt. We have some residents in opposition to the application, so first of all, do you have any changes to make to your application?
I think with the multiple submissions as of late confirming revised variances, it might be best to do a little housekeeping here. Go through the latest public notice and confirm what has been made and what hasn't.
All right. So we've got the notice up?
Excellent, I see it on my screen.
Yep.
All right, so I am confirming that we are indeed pursuing a reduced main wall height for eight point seven five meters. I am glad that see that has been properly illustrated. Thank you.
So that is variance?
Two, yes.
Okay. Any change to variance one?
No change to variance one.
Okay.
Two is correct. No change to variance three?
What is the change to two?
I think he's referring to a previous request that now it is eight point seven five. Was it higher before?
It was. It was at eight point nine before.
Okay.
There's been so much back and forth, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here today.
We're trying.
Me too.
All right, let's just start. Nothing to variance one, no change, it's still point five six. Variance two is eight point seven five meters, that is the variance. And then for number three, I assume that stays the same.
Correct. If we could scroll down, that'd be fantastic.
Slowly, we're getting there. Okay, variance four?
Correct.
It stays the same?
That is the same, yes.
Okay, five?
That is correct, yes.
Six?
Correct.
Seven?
Correct.
Eight?
Correct.
And nine?
Correct. I'm glad to note that the changes we've made since our August deferral has not been reflected in the latest public notice you see on your screen. Thank you for taking the time to confirm with me today.
Okay. I'm just, okay. And you've seen the planning staff report?
I have reviewed the submitted planning staff reports, and I will acknowledge that I've also reviewed the letters of objection that are provided to the AIC as well.
Okay. Well, let's go forward with a brief presentation for the benefit of the residents, and you have five minutes.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for pulling the presentation up. As noted, I have reviewed the notice from the community planning as well as the letters of objection. I thank all departments and neighborhoods providing that information. I think in review of all this information, one commonality that you do see is the emphasis to ensure that any new development coincides with the existing mass in this neighborhood. So we did two things. One, we wanted to define what this neighborhood was. You can see that in our little key map here. Our subject property is located at fifty Lurgan Drive, just north of it, Bevdale Road, just south of it, Yorkview Road. It's a little suburb, as you may call it, is what we deemed our neighborhood. So we started looking at all the previous minor variances in the area, did our research. We wanted to understand how we can modify our mass to have variances that are similar or less than what's been previously approved in the area. So that's what we did. We spent many months reviewing, providing this information to community planning, and revising our proposal to see to see the mass you see today. So let's dive in.
Mr. Overholt, could you just pause for one second? Could we have it quiet in the chamber? It's really hard to hear the applicant on. Okay, thank you. Okay, carry on, sorry.
No problem. Thank you for that. If we were to look at page number five and six of the presentation, it's diagrams and precedent that relate to the main wall height, which of course is an issue for community planning. You look at page number six, you'll see multiple examples of structures in this local area that have similar or larger main wall heights. Thirty-eight Lurgan Drive was approved for a main wall height variance of eight point nine, just east of our structure. Ninety-eight, ninety-three, twenty Yorkview Drive, just south of our structure, approved of main wall heights of nine point three nine, eight point four one, eight point eight seven. We revised and reduced our main wall height to be eight point seven five, smaller than most of these values. Additionally, one structure located right at the entranceway of this little neighborhood, one-two-three Bevdale, is approved for eight point five nine meters. Sure, we're slightly above it, but I want to ensure that the precedent is clearly noted, that there are numerous structures in this little area that do have main wall height variances. Number three stories, we're proposing three, right? Not so common these days, as we note. One-two-three Bevdale, located again just down the street from us, approved for three How we masked and designed our structure with the internal garage located at grade, ensuring that we didn't extract any usable GFA from the homeowner, it popped our building up drastically high, right? We could have lowered the basement drastically, but we would have obtained head height concerns in staircases in areas in the first floor and had a rear facade that is drastically below grade, which we did not want to do. Variance number four, sorry, number, that pertains to the proposed height of the first floor above the established grade. We're proposing one point four three, and you can see this on page ten of the presentation. One point four three versus one point two. You can see in our precedent and the research that we've done, it's evident in our submitted research and in our presentation, that there's many examples of elevated pedestrian heights and F F V above grade here in this little area. Twelve Lurien is down the street, approved for one point seven eight. Eleven Bevdale, down the street, again, one point seven three. One-two-three Bevdale also approved for one fifty nine. Ten Yorkview, just south, two point zero six. I understand the need to design a structure that meets the expectations and similarities that's defined in the existing neighborhood, and we did a lot of research to ensure that is the place. If you look at page twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four of our submitted material, you'll see existing massing and structures in the area that is similar to ours, especially page twenty-two of our presentation, that looks like there is an abundance of new modern houses that appears to have an elevated mass and main wall height variances associated with them. If you can kindly review those on page twenty-two, you may see what I am talking about. I want to note that not only did we meet with community planning, we had members of our staff reach out to the neighbors directly, providing letters and meeting them in person to describe our changes, to ensure that they may be satisfied with our changes. If you have any questions, comments, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? This point? No? All right, let's move on to our residents. They're all virtual, right? Oh, I'm sorry. Would you like to come forward first? Um, if you'd like to come forward to the podium over here?
I'd also like a chance to speak, please.
Is that your husband? You can have five minutes together, total.
Can you hear me?
Push a button.
And just to confirm your name and address?
My name is Alexandra Warage Middleman, and I'm at fifty-two Lurgan Drive.
Okay. And your husband is?
Jonathan Middleman.
Okay.
All right, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, hello.
I understand you're going to speak, and if you don't say everything, your wife will fill in anything else.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, panelists, and thank you all attendees. Some of the things that were shared by the architect designer unfortunately are not true. As far as outreach goes, some neighbors received an envelope in their mailboxes, and I passed that on to your application technician, Mr. Pravanas, to post, and it was more of a, I'm gonna let the panelists decide how they wish to describe this letter, but it felt more like a coercion letter. There was no contact, there was no outreach to any of the neighbors. Be it as it may, some of the minor, some of the lists of variances, which I feel are not minor, but that's my opinion, were reduced somewhat, they were not substantially reduced. While it's true, in the area, there are some large monstrous homes, what wasn't discussed, or rather what wasn't shared, is that each street also has some of their own individual idiosyncrasies as well. For example, side yard setbacks on Lurgan are different from side yard setbacks on Yorkview. And while it's true there's some larger homes on Yorkview and Bevdale, even east of, east or west of Semlack, they are substantially different. So a lot of statements too about what's been approved certainly is not tested. And for example, the house at thirty-eight Lurgan is flanked by two houses that are not owned, that the owners don't live there, they are leased. So whatever outreach has gone out to those houses, we, again, untested, we don't know if those owners even had a chance to, to object or be involved in the planning process. So I live at my house, my wife lives at our house, each neighbor Miniguchi on forty-eight and others behind and front. We do have concerns with the overall dimensions. They are still rather excessive. We have a lot of windows on our east wall, and if the building proposed is going to be built to its position dimensions, it's going to obliterate our sunlight, and it's going to obliterate our enjoyment of the house. If the plan proceeds with only a three or four-foot setback, I imagine that means that air conditioning condensers are going to be mount, wall mounted elevated against the wall, that's just going to project sound and noise. I don't want a dark wall, I don't want a dark yard, I like to enjoy my yard, as everyone should. Look, let it be known, I'm not against development, I'm all for it, but I'm asking the panel kindly to consider keeping the proposed home within the zoning dimensions. We'd be grateful for that. I think, I think I've shared what I have to share. Everything else is listed in our letter, in certainly more detail, and I'm going to be respectful of the panel's time.
All right, thank you. You have two minutes.
I'm with my husband with, the height is crazy, they're reaching to the moon and the stars. The second-story patio, I'm baffled by how big they want to make it. We have children, we have dogs, this is not a party area, we want to keep this family-oriented. It's a, it's an invasion of privacy for them to just have such a big area and look into everybody's backyard. I have a problem with that. And also the property, just coming so close to us, I have a problem with what my husband was saying, we're not going to have a problem with sunlight, we're going to have a problem with breeze, all of my windows on that side are going to be blocked, I'm going to be living in the dark. And I enjoy sunlight, I don't want to put the lights on, I like natural sunlight, and this is, it's just not fair. It's just not fair.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions of the residents? No, all right. Is there somebody else?
I'm here.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, hi. Could we have your name and address, please?
Yes, Nadine Shabbar, fifty Lurgan Drive, directly across from the proposed development.
Okay.
I would echo most of what, well, all of what Jonathan said. We've been conversing as neighbors with this proposed development, and are vehemently against it for all the reasons Jonathan listed, and also, I don't believe that the applicant reached out to the neighbors. I never got a call, I never got a knock on the door, I never got a notice. That was agreed to at the last meeting in August, that there would be community consultation. There was many. All we got was a letter dropped in the mail, that I think my neighbors got too. It basically said, here's what we're doing, and by the way, here's a page at the end that you can sign to support it. That's ridiculous. That's not consultation whatsoever. There was no meeting, there was no neighbors coming together to sit down with the applicant, and all they are concerned, and adjustments made accordingly. So, you know, that was violated, and that should be noted by the committee, that the applicant did not adhere to that. Secondly, you know, this feels more like a multiplex to me, the height, the mapping, the lack of setback, I mean, this is a very small street, Lurgan Drive, in the neighborhood. And to put such a monster home on, that's going to dwarf pretty well every other home, you know, ninety-nine percent of the homes in the area, just, it's just not suitable to the environment and to the neighbors. So for all those reasons, I really, really object to this development. The applicant has not listened to us, hasn't even talked to us, and I don't know what they did with the planning committee, but, you know, it's ridiculous what they're proposing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions? No, all right. I believe we have one other neighbor.
Through you, Madam Chair, Louis Menon Kuzi. We do not have him on the call.
So that's everybody at this point? Okay. Let's bring the applicant back to address the comments that have been raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the neighbors for coming forth and expressing their concerns. Really, there's two things I want to note here that I believe is important to discuss. One, it may seem that the neighbors are in disagreement, that we have not made an attempt to communicate with them, but we did open the door to communication. We spoke to two neighbors in person, as listed in our presentation, and provided letters where we could. At the end of the letter, there is clear contact information, emails, and phone numbers that you could call and discuss with us. The bottom paragraph of the letter clearly states that if you have questions or concerns, contact us, right? Everyone is quite busy these days. I'm sure the residents wouldn't want an architect to reach their door at six P M. at night and pressure them to sit down for an hour and a half to discuss, right? We all work nine-to-fives, some longer than others. We provided contact information for them to contact us and discuss their application, which we would have been happy to do so. Two, I understand that there are still concerns with our massing. I want to make it known that we have done what we can to design our structure in accordance to what has been existently provided and constructed in the area. And to, since our first hearing in August, we've removed two variances. We've reduced our building length by three point seven two meters. We've reduced our main wall height by point seven five, even though our main wall, even though our- Even though our main wall, even though we don't have a building height variance, we even reduced our building height as well, from 9.96 to 9.81. Our lock coverage is now only 1.2% of a variance compared to the previously requested 34.4%. And in order to appease the neighbor directly to the west of our property, we increased our side yard setback from .91 to 1.22, which is a common side yard setback in many properties throughout Toronto, and in this little area as well. As listed on page 23, 24, and 25 of our presentation, there are clear examples of massing similar to ours, three-story structures, internal garages, large main wall heights, that are beginning to be constructed in the area. And if they're in the area and they're constructed, that precedent remains. I, we take very seriously the concerns of the neighbors and community planning. When we spoke with community planning back right after our deferral in early September, they described that their concern was really just the main wall height. I was shocked to see that they're concerned with a number of stories in the pedestrian entrance height. But the precedent does remain for these variances. And if the intent is to design a structure that is coherent with the existing character of the neighborhood, we, we follow variances that are similar to that, and we incorporate those into our projects. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions of the applicant? Okay, Ms. Martin, go ahead.
Uh, just have a one, I have a question about the AC on the, is it on the east side of your property? Does that meet the zoning bylaw, the AC? It's, and how far away from the property line is it?
I'm just pulling up my site plan right now. Our, we have a setback of 0.61 from the property line. I believe the closest you can go to the property line is 0.6 meters, as per the zoning bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Right.
Now, if there is a concern with the rear mounted, we can find other ways to appease the neighbors with the installation of our air conditioning. We're happy to work with them.
All right, thank you, any other questions? Ready to take it into committee? Yes? Okay, let's take it into committee. Anyone wanna start it off? Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, just to start off discussion, I, I support the planning department's position, which is a concern for the bulk mass height of this building. It, it does have a substantial mass, and the portions of that mass that the planning department has chosen to focus on is the number of stories and the height of the front and rear walls, and I agree with them. I think it's excessive in this particular case. I also think that the height above the first floor, of the first floor is, is excessive given the context in which we find ourselves. And I, I would just like to comment, because this is the second application today where the applicant has made the same kind of argument, which is, I found other developments that had specific attributes that were exactly the same size as what I'm looking for, therefore, that's what I designed to. What, that seems to me that that's the wrong way around. The planning bylaws are what you're supposed to design to, and given unique circumstances, unique conditions, there may be variances requested. I don't see that the variances here are the result of unique conditions or unique needs. They're, they're just, in my view, a desire for something bigger. And I, I'm inclined to agree with the planning department, this is out of keeping with the, with the area, and I would support the planning department's recommendation.
Thank you. Other comments? Or a motion from someone? Mr., Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, if, if my colleagues are, don't have any concerns to, to share, I would like to put forward a motion that the amended application be approved with the exception of variances two, three, and four, which are refused, that a six-foot-high privacy screen is to be provided along the rear platform as shown on the second-story main floor plan and forestry condition number two.
Thank you, is there a second or for that motion? Ms. Martin? All in favor of the motion? That is four in favor, opposed? Mr. Marziani? All right, the application as amended has been approved. Okay, we were moving on to 15, thank you, gentle reminder, which is 3125 Steels Avenue East, which is an application for the proposed development of a 10-story hotel with 243 suites. Variances are for gross floor area, front yard setback, number of parking spaces, size of loading spaces, location of loading spaces, and area in front of loading space. On file, we have minutes from October 24th, survey plans, a planning rationale dated October 16th, addendum letters dated October 27th and October 31st, a transportation consulting letter, a transportation review memo, and the previous hearing package. And I take it we have our applicant in front of us, welcome?
Testing, okay, Claire Ricker, 3 Church Street, Suite 200 in Toronto.
Thank you. And first of all, do you have any changes to make to the application today?
No, not today.
Do people wish a presentation on this? I just have a question.
Sure.
Can someone pull up the site plan? I understand the variance for the loading space, but I guess my question is, where is the loadings? I couldn't even find it on the site plan, but I wasn't looking that hard.
Per- perhaps we could actually pull up our presentation deck?
It's just, in my mind, I'm thinking, how does a hotel function without a loading space? That's my question, basically.
For sure, if we can pull up our presentation PDF, page nine or slide nine, we have a, an illustrative graphic. So maybe while we're waiting for that to be pulled up, there have been loading spaces provided, they're outside of the building, they're on the south side. So I appreciate that the, the visuals show the building in sort of an east-west orientation. It is indeed north-south in, in view, so when I refer to the south side, that's on the, the right-hand side of the screen. So there are, are three loading spaces that are external to the building.
And then where do they get access to the building? Is it through the main entrance? Or is there, are there, is there a dedicated, what would you call it?
Like servicing corridor?
Exactly.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Yep, so if you can just pull up slide nine, or pa- page nine?
I just wasn't understanding, and I looked, but I didn't see it, and I thought,
For sure.
Yeah, slide nine, I think she said?
Yep, so just keep going a couple more pages. Then one. Excellent, no, we can stop right there, yeah. So you can see outlined in red are the requested locations of the loading spaces, including the sizes, which are in keeping with, I understand, a departure from the North York standard, but are in keeping with the broader citywide standard. We do have in, in the chambers today our transportation consultant BA group, if there were more specific questions, but from the analysis and, and review that they have done, that this will adequately serve the functionality of a hotel of this size and scale.
Okay, all right, and the entrance is the, where the blue arrow is, is that?
Correct, yeah.
All right, thank you for that, I, I don't think I need a, an engineering response to that, I think I'm fine, just had the question.
Sure.
Thanks for clarifying, all right, any other questions? Oh, Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, your questions prompt one for me. Back to the screen, where, where is garbage picked up?
Garbage pickup, let me pull up the plans.
I did find that when I was looking on the plan.
Because this takes you into a corridor, the, the loading spaces take you into a corridor on the main floor.
I think the garbage is on the, is it not on the north, along the north property line? I saw...
It's a vestibule.
It's underground, it's, it's, I forget what those are called, the underground waste. There's a name for those pickups. You see the two, the two black? Earth bin, that's what I was trying to think of, yeah. So it's, it's a somewhat...
So the garbage is collected within the hotel?
Correct.
There's been a conference, got lots of stuff left over, how does it get over to here?
It's brought outside along the rear of the building towards where the garbage pickup will be.
By, by person, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Any other questions, or are we good now? All right, let's take it into committee, thanks.
Sure.
Mr. Marziani?
Through you, Madam Chair, I think it's a supportable application. I see a positive report by transportation, so I don't have any difficulty with it, and I put forward a motion to approve, subject to the condition number one in the transportation report.
Oops, sorry, Ms. Sankar, sorry, were you just seconding? Thank you very much, all right, all in favor? That is unanimous, the application's been approved. You're welcome. All right, item 16, 997 Mount Pleasant Road. This is an application to alter the existing detached dwelling by converting the carport to an attached garage and constructing a second-story addition above with a balcony. The variances are for south side yard setback to second-story platform, floor space index, platform encroachment into a side yard that abuts a street. On file, we have a survey and plans. We have our applicant. Someone have two... Mr. Allen?
Hello?
Does he have two, two, sorry, you need to turn one off.
Are you hearing me now?
You're still getting echo.
Are you hearing me now?
But he needs to mute. Oh, you need to mute your YouTube.
Madam Chair, the applicant has more than one electronic device on,
Right.
whether it's YouTube on a, on a computer or a cellphone, but he's gotta turn one of those off.
Yeah, just leave on the WebEx connection. Now we've lost him totally. Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, we can't really hear you, you're very quiet.
Okay, are you hearing me now?
Yes?
Okay, yes, good.
Okay, let's start with your name and address.
Oh, my name is Daniel Allen, address 66 Motte Avenue, Brampton, Ontario.
All right, thank you. Anyone here on this application? No? All right, do we have questions, or do, do we want a presentation? I don't think so. All right, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Niffel. Oh, your mic?
Pardon me, sorry, I didn't have my mic on. Could you explain to me what material is on the outside wall of the former garage? And it's shown on your drawing, I think it's your east elevation, and I just, I just, I'm not, I'm not clear on what the material is.
Okay, let's go to it. Yes, ma- the material is just exterior wood tans, I think four, 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 four feet wide by half an inch, just stuck on each other.
And then you've got the posters are piles in the ground, right?
Yes, these are already existing, holding the, the, the existing roof, that's there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? No, let's take it into committee. Oh, Ms. Martin, go ahead.
On the second story, it's a new master bedroom, is that right?
Yes.
And master en suite? And is that a second-story balcony off of that? It looks like a balcony off.
No, it's, it's, it's actually the rest of the existing roof.
Oh.
Because the addition doesn't take the entire roof of the garage.
So it's the roof of the first-story garage?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's still acting as balcony?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other questions? No, all right, let's take it into committee. There isn't a balcony variance, is there?
No.
No, all right, Mr. Niffel, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Sankar, did you have a question? Or were you gonna move a motion? Okay, that would be great, go ahead, I apologize.
Oh, no, if Mr. Niffel wanted to, I'm, I'm open as well. Okay, so I, I guess I will, I, I do believe that this application is quite ma- minor. I, you know, I didn't have a problem going through it. I do believe that it, it meets a four test, I don't have any questions, and there's nothing that's outstanding from other, you know, staff agencies that are sharing their concerns, nor from the public. As such, I do believe it meets the four tests, so I support this application to approval. And as is, thank you.
Thank you, do we have a second or, Mr. Niffel? All in favor? That is unanimous, the application's been approved. All right, item 17, 76 Edith Drive. This is an application to legalize and maintain the carport at the rear of the property, of the, of property. Well, the variances are percentage of rear yard, soft landscaping. And on file, we have a survey, plans, cover letter, photos, and a community planning report. Do we have our applicant?
Yes, good afternoon, Katrina Gustafson, I'm the owner and resident at 76 Edith Drive.
Thank you. We don't seem to have anybody here for this item, does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Okay. Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So variance one, this is a minimum of fifty percent of the rear yard, soft landscaping, is required to be sixty-seven percent. Your, almost your entire backyard is actually, it looks like it's paved area. That's not soft landscaping. That's hard landscaping. So can you comment on that?
Sure, the the mission that I provided shows on page three a picture of the rear yard. And the one on the left, that's the, so that is the original house. I actually removed all that decking. If you go to the next page, you can see the existing, the current state of it. And so that photo on the left is taken from my balcony and the grass is not doing well, but it, you can see it's largely grass there on the left.
Yeah, but you're drawing your, I think it's your site plan, yeah. Your site plan shows completely paved area. It's not what is existing there now, it's what you're proposing. So another one.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not proposing to make any changes, this is to regularize and maintain. The site plan, it's my understanding that all that hatching on the site plan is soft landscaping.
No, I think it's a graphic, it's a graphic, it's the hatch they use, it looks like pavers, but it's not, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah.
It's what they intended to be, grass. Where's the?
Or maybe it's trying to resemble your grass.
I've never seen grass indicated by hatching like this.
I know, but, you know, it's the, oh, it doesn't say grass. No, but it doesn't say paving either.
No.
It looks like more paving, though.
It does look.
It looks like, and what's, the front, is that, is that soft as well? Maybe that's a requirement that you label it as soft landscaping.
Well, if we were to approve the variance, it needs to comply for zoning, right?
The.
It's just not, not clear, right?
No, it's just the designer chose to do it that way.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I will say, I think it was clear to the to the member, to the, to the report writer because one of the conditions that he proposed be included is that the rear yard landscaping be developed substantially in accordance with the site plan. So I think he understood the site plan to be referencing soft landscaping there.
I mean, he left the word "soft" out in the proposed. He's got rear yard landscaping where he says soft landscaping for the top. My inkling is that it's going to be paved over, but.
Oh, I mean, I'm, I'm finished. I have, I mean, I can tell you, I have no intention of paving it over, I don't want to. I want to maintain the grass as is. I don't want to make any changes. I'm just looking to regularize the status quo.
Oh, you're the owner and the agent, is that right?
Yes.
Yes.
And the access to the carport is from the right away, right?
It's from the rear, yeah.
So they're not coming into the yard to access the carport, so it wouldn't make sense to pave it. If you look at the photo. All right, do we have any more questions or do we understand? I mean, we could. The variance is for soft landscaping, so they have to comply with that if we were to approve it. I don't have a concern with that, even though it doesn't look like soft landscaping. It could be hay bales, you know?
Well, the planning, the plan, the planning report is actually a good way to secure that it's not, nothing is changing with the existing, so.
And I, and the planning reports also clarifying that the approval only pertains to the as-built conditions of the existing carport. So it's not like they can expand the carport into the yard or anything. Has to be, the, the application is to approve what's there now.
The planning report, though, is confusing to pick up on the point that's been made before. They refer you to the site plan. And it says that the approval only pertains to the as-built conditions. Variance number one regarding the rear yard landscaping is developed substantially in accordance with the site plan drawing, which is what we just saw. Well, that site plan drawing doesn't tell you anything. It tells you that the soft landscaping existing currently is sixty-seven percent, but there's nothing on here to tell you that what we think looks like paving is in fact soft landscaping. So I don't, I'm not.
But the report makes reference to the application proposing a rear yard soft landscaping of thirty-nine point seven percent, right?
I know, but the planning department refers you to this drawing to show it. They want it built according to the.
Right, but isn't that what is shown?
I think it's, I agree with my colleague. It's a very confusing recommendation, given the way that it's. I, I would be inclined to not call up the site plan because it doesn't make any sense, frankly.
Well, you could refer to the hatched area in the rear yard as soft landscaping.
You'd have to do that, yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, who wants to? Let's take it into committee, and does someone want to come up with a motion?
I mean, I could if I could try.
Sure.
I I'd like to make a motion to approve this application with the premise that the hatched areas on the site plan are labeled "soft landscaping." Can we do that?
I mean, but that, what does that do? It doesn't.
What it does is it makes sure that they don't pave over that area because there'll be virtually no area on this plan.
But then they wouldn't comply with the variance that's granted, would they? They wouldn't comply with the variance if they did that.
The variance is not clear, maybe that's the problem. I don't think. Anyway, somebody else try then.
Well, the variance is for proposed rear yard landscaping of thirty-nine point seven percent.
Madam Chairman, I, I I, I would propose that we.
Oh, I see what you mean. Okay, just make a condition that the rear yard landscaping area be soft landscaping. How about that?
Sorry, I can't hear when member.
There's no variance to the front. Okay? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sankar can't hear you, Ms. Martin. I think you need to be closer to the mic.
The front is also shown as a hatch, so in other words, it is also indicated to be hard landscaping. If we assume that hatching means it's got an existing walkway, existing porch, and then this hatched area, so that should be, that should be soft as well.
But there's no variance related to that front, so what are we, what are we identifying and why?
All right, all right.
Madam Chairman, can I clarify that the variance number one, if it was approved, should read the proposed rear yard land, soft landscape area is thirty-nine point seven percent.
Probably should be written that way.
That's exactly what I said about ten minutes ago.
So could I, I would like to move that the application be approved, subject to condition variance number one, reading that the proposed rear yard soft landscaping area is thirty-nine point seven percent, and that the approval only pertains to the as-built conditions of the existing carport. And I wouldn't put in another condition about the site plan.
Okay, are we okay with that, staff? That come out okay? Okay?
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Marziani. All in favor? That is unanimous, the application has been approved.
Does the applicant know what we did?
Uh, hopefully. I think she understood, she understood the issue and I think we clarified it. I don't think she'd have an issue with it. All right, let's move on. Item eighteen, 251 Park Home Avenue. This is an application to alter the existing dwelling by adding a front addition and a new porch. We have variances for east side yard setback to front addition. On file, we have a survey, plans, revised plans, November twenty-sixth, photos, and a community planning report.
Hello, good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Hello.
And committee members. My name is Eddie Perez, I'm at fifty-three, sorry, at 537 Rogers Road. And before you, we have just the one variance, which has been, which has been modified as per planning's request to one point two meters.
Okay, thank you very much. Did we get that, staff? Variance number one is being modified from one point one six to, sorry, Mr. Perez, was that one point two?
Correct.
Okay, to one point two meters. Thank you. Anybody need a presentation or have any questions? All right. All right, let's take it into committee.
Madam Chairman, I, I'd just like to offer a comment. I don't have trouble with the application, but I don't understand why changing the setback from one point one six to one point two was such a big deal. I mean, it's, I don't think anybody would see the difference.
I, I agree with you, but I think that the staff meant to keep it at one point two because it's more consistent with the.
Pretty standard.
Because once you go below one, one, one point two, it's becoming a, yeah.
I believe, yeah, that makes sense to me, too.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Sankar?
Yeah, if no one else has any other comments, I can put forward a motion. It's a really minor application, one variance, no contests, and they've agreed with planning. They've reduced it and amended the application accordingly. So I put forward a motion to approve the application as amended. That's it.
Thank you very much, and do we have a seconder? Mr. Marziani. All right, all in favor? That is unanimous, the application's been approved. Sorry, oh, yes. All right, Mr. Marziani is stepping out as he has a conflict. So 788 Marley Avenue. This is an application to legalize and maintain the front vestibule as constructed. The variance is for front yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, site photos, order to comply, and letters regarding the status of the property. Do we have the agent on this?
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Alberti Roshalmi from Eden Engineering and Design. And I'm the agent for the owner requesting relief for one variance for this project, for this building. There used to be a canopy, an open canopy under the existing footprint that wasn't stable, and it was brought down, was removed, and now they have they want to, they want to replace it with an enclosure in order to prevent the wind to come in because it's a place of worship and, and people get very cold. Any question I can address, please?
So it was built without getting a permit, is that what happened?
There, there was a canopy there, and they, it was removed, it wasn't stable, and they, they put it back, but they didn't know that this was already encroaching into the, into the front yard setback. So that was, they, they didn't, they did that unintentionally.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, thank you. Does anybody have questions for the applicant at this point? No? All right, let us hear from, we have people in the audience for this item, I believe, yep. Please come forward and start with your name and address, and we'll go from there.
My name is David Matlow, I live at 610 Briar Hill.
Oh, we don't think the mic is on.
I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, go ahead.
My name is David Matlow, I live at 610 Briar Hill Avenue in Toronto.
Thank you very much. And you have comments on the application?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to speak to this application. I'm one of two plaintiffs in a lawsuit against the applicant. We initiated this lawsuit over three years ago as concerned members of the community, and we remain very concerned. We have no financial or other interest in the matter other than to ensure that the assets of this nonprofit, one of which is seventy-eight, 788 Marley, are stewarded for the benefit of the community in accordance with the constitution of the nonprofit and in compliance with all laws. The nonprofit dates back to nineteen oh seven. It has a long history in our, our community. 788 Marley was built in the early nineteen sixties with the support of members of Toronto's Jewish community and the proceeds of the sale of a prior building at 651 Spadina Avenue, which in turn was acquired with the support of the community. 788 Marley is a community asset. It does not belong to a small group of unelected people who seized for themselves the authority to do with it as it wants. And the lawsuit is primarily about governance. Who has the authority to serve as members, directors, and officers? In the lawsuit, we state that those who now say they are directors and officers are not properly elected or appointed. As a result, they do not have authority to act, including the authority to renovate the sixty-year-old community building. And, and we heard from the engineer that there was a canopy that's just being replaced, but the last canopy, and I, and I don't know the dates of it, was an open-air canopy, and this is a closed vestibule glazed in with it, just, it's, it's not just a replacement, it's a different kind of structure. The applicant says that delaying this hearing until the issue is resolved prejudices the TZC. The reverse is true. Proceeding with the renovation is prejudicial. And the applicant says that the corporate profile report shows that Mr. Maman, who signed some of the documents, is a duly-elected director and officer. And that is misleading in the extreme. That form simply shows that someone filed a form that says he is. It does not make it so. And the applicant started a renovation without a building permit and was caught. The vestibule has been in its unfinished state since March as a result. Thankfully, no security issue has arisen then, or to my knowledge, in the preceding sixty years. And I mentioned security because it's referenced in the December second letter by Mr. Barassa. We heard from the engineer, the reason for the vestibule is because of cold, not because of, of security. But it's misleading to say that completing the vestibule is now necessary for security reasons because no security issue has arisen since the uncompleted vestibule has been stopped in March, nor to my knowledge in the last sixty years that this building has existed. If security is needed, there are other ways to do it without permanently changing the building, and if it's the issue of cold, then people can come inside the building. The renovation is also insulting to the community's members who built this building and to its history. As the replacement vestibule, the new construction covers the building's cornerstone, which says that the building was constructed in nineteen sixty-three, even though the application says it was built in nineteen eighty. The application, the applicant states that the vestibule should not be left unfinished for three years, and that I agree with. It shouldn't have started in the first place. The entrance to the building should be restored to how it was before. A group of unelected people with no authority who illegally start a project on a. A group of unelected people with no authority who illegally start a project on a community building should not be able to benefit from the false start by insisting it would be prejudicial to not finish it. They simply should take it down. The applicant refers to the building as a commercial property. It is not. The zoning of the property is R five seven, exception to one-family detached dwelling zone, which permits only a place of worship and a religious and cultural center. It should not have a paving company as a tenant. I don't know what other commercial uses there are in this building resulting from the purported boards not understanding the property zoning status. Same way they didn't understand that the new renovation required a building permit. And maybe this should be investigated. It appears that the application materials and other plans, there are other plans, these should not be permitted. The lawsuit has a high profile in the community and has been reported on a number of times in the press. And also, a group of over a hundred and fifty community members are seeking to intervene in the lawsuit. And there has not been sufficient notice of this hearing. The applicant says that the sign was tilted because it was windy on November twenty-sixth. I went by on November twenty-fifth and it was also tilted. There was not a two-day windstorm in Toronto last week. And wind does not explain why the sign was fifteen meters away from the sidewalk. The city should not play a role...
Can you wrap up?
Yes, last minute, thank you so much. The city should not play a role in a contentious lawsuit. That is what it would be doing by allowing the variance to proceed. Rather, the city should wait until the issue of authority is resolved. If the applicant is in a rush, they can work with us to resolve the case or accelerate the schedule for a hearing. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, Mr. Niffel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you clarify the issue about the vestibule being complete? Is it now functioning? Can you walk through it and into the building?
It is not complete, just by visual from driving by. When the city discovered that the construction was happening without a building permit, the construction stopped. So there is a frame. It looks like there are some wires that would have connected, lights or something, or a door opener. And there's no glass on the building. And Mr. Barassa's December second letter says that when the city halted it, they were about to install the glass.
So it's only the frame now?
It's just a frame, that's correct.
Can you walk through it?
You can...
Is it preventing access to the building?
The front door has been locked. Last time I went by, there's a padlock on the front door, so I believe people are entering through a back door. If one physically could, if they opened the door, go through the uncompleted vestibule into the building, but it appears as if they're locking that. The reason for that, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Matthias Memmel, three 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 Bay Street. I purport to speak on behalf of Mr. Matlow, but he's also one of two plaintiffs in the lawsuit. And I propose to address the committee on that basis.
Go ahead.
May I proceed? Thank you. The application was submitted to this committee by individuals whose authority to act on behalf of a committee serving nonprofit is in serious dispute. It's in dispute before the courts. And that's in court file number CV twenty-two zero zero six eight four nine eight. As I said, my name is Matthias Memmel. I'm counsel to the plaintiffs in that court dispute. And I speak to you on their behalf. My comments today are not made in respect of an application between warring neighbors, which I know you have familiarity with, I just sat through the hearing. They're made in the context of a much larger governance dispute over who has authority to act for the applicant. That applicant who caused the application before you, who hired, purports to hire an agent to submit that application. And it's a nonprofit that doesn't just serve the people on Marley Street, or is supposed to serve the people on Marley Street. It's to serve the people in Toronto and all of its environs. As I set out in my letter of November twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, the city must not become an unwitting participant in authorizing actions that could irreversibly alter the aspects of that nonprofit before the courts get to determine who the lawful directors are. And I want to make three points for the committee. The first is you have discretion to stay this application. Should the panel approve the application? This administrative body is essentially accepting that the individuals who have caused the application to be filed have authority. Respectfully, that's for the court to decide. Secondly, there's no prejudice to the applicant. The individuals claiming to act for TZ, the owner of the property, commenced this process to address an unsanctioned renovation, a situation of their own making. The final trial will occur in due course. They caused it, they can wait. Third, the public interest demands caution. I first point to the inconsistencies I raised in my letter regarding the application itself, of which I won't take you through now, you have the letter. But I point you to those. And secondly, on that third point, the nonprofit's assets exist for the benefit of the community. This committee allowing changes before judicial resolution risks irreversible harm and undermines the public trust in the work that you folks do and in the work of the administration of justice more broadly. It's to allow it to play out, please. It cannot be the case, more broadly, that the city of Toronto blindly accepts applications where the submitter's authority has been questioned and that's been brought to your attention. Again, it's the subject of a court dispute. In short, this is a mess of the individuals who purport to be the directors of the applicant. It's a mess of their own making. And it's a mess that the court is going to clean up. Committee doesn't have to do it. The appropriate course of action is to stay this application, CNA Dia, pending the outcome of that trial. That preserves the status quo, that protects community assets, and it upholds the integrity of municipal decision-making. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for the speaker? Anyone? No? All right. Do we have somebody else on this, other than the applicant? Right. Sorry, they are... Are they...
We have Avi Bruce.
And they're virtual?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I believe she's on the applicant's side representing, but we can clarify that.
Let's just clarify with her.
Can members of the committee hear me?
Yes, I think you have two devices on, you just need to have the WebEx on.
The issue is I'm having an issue with the audio on the WebEx. I've also called in from the phone. Can you unmute the phone and not my WebEx?
Can we unmute the phone and not the WebEx? One moment, we're pondering.
I don't have his phone.
Perhaps we could phone him, just put him on speaker? Yeah. Can you, Mr. Barassa, can you disconnect your WebEx? But he can't talk, can he? You can't connect his phone?
I'm using the WebEx to see you, but the issue is your audio was not coming through the WebEx.
Can you mute the WebEx?
I have my computer speakers muted.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, this is what happens when any applicant calls in, or sorry, any neighbor or interested party calls in with two devices on. There's nothing that we can do from our end.
Okay.
I would suggest turn one off and only use the other one.
I think he was having trouble with WebEx, with the audio. Try hanging up with your phone.
He indicated he was watching us through WebEx but talking into his phone, so he's got two devices. It sounds like he's using two devices.
He is, but I think he wasn't able to talk with the WebEx was the indication I got, but... Can you try hanging your phone up and just using WebEx? Does that work?
I've hung up the phone, hopefully this works, is this better?
Fine.
Okay. If I can't hear you, I'll let you know. The issue I was having before is that I couldn't hear you through the WebEx. It seems to be coming through now.
Okay.
Apologies for the technical issue. So my name's Avi Barassa, I'm with the law firm Ross Nisari. I act for the Toronto Zionist Council in the litigation that Mr. Matlow commenced and that he and Mr. Memmel referenced. So I just want to make a few brief comments in response to the comments of Mr. Memmel and Mr. Matlow. Those are all...
Before you start, could you just give us your address?
Sure, my office is at three twelve Adelaide Street West.
Thank you. Carry on.
You have a letter from me that I sent on December second, which summarizes my comments. TZ owns the building at issue, seven eighty-eight Marley. TZ has a board of directors. Mr. Giddy Mammon, who signed the application, is the president of TZ, is a director and officer of TZ. Mr. Matlow commenced the lawsuit in twenty twenty-two, challenging the governance structure of TZ. He's made various allegations in a statement of claim, which will have to go to trial. They have not been heard by a court. There have been no findings and no decisions made in Mr. Matlow's lawsuit. TZ has defended that lawsuit and is disputing Mr. Matlow's allegations. Among other things in TZ's defense is TZ's allegation that Mr. Matlow has improper motives against TZ and has taken various actions to interfere with TZ's operations. This committee is not the forum for Mr. Matlow to try to have his issues heard. He cannot ask this committee to wade into the matters raised in his litigation. It will be for a court to decide. Importantly, even though three years have passed in the lawsuit, Mr. Matlow has not brought any motion before the Ontario Superior Court to restrain TZ's existing board in any way or to dispute their authority pending trial. So until there is a finding by this court, to the contrary, TZ's existing board has full authority to proceed with this application and the committee can hear it. There is nothing set out by the courts or otherwise preventing the committee from hearing this application. If the committee were to accept Mr. Matlow's submissions, you would effectively be saying that TZ cannot act, even though there has been no finding by a court to that effect, and you'd be restraining TZ's authority and wading into the issues in the litigation. It would effectively be granting Mr. Matlow a remedy that he has failed to seek in court. Another important point is Mr. Matlow says, let's wait until there's a trial. A trial will not occur in this matter before twenty twenty-eight at the earliest. In the latest correspondence between the parties and the court, the court is only going to hear from us in April of next year about when the trial should be scheduled. So we will not even get a trial date until April twenty twenty-six. And by that time, the available trial dates will likely be well into twenty twenty-eight. And furthermore, a trial will not necessarily resolve this matter finally. Either party, depending on the result of trial, can bring an appeal, which could likely add another year. So it's not appropriate for Mr. Matlow to simply say, pens down until I have my trial, because his trial is years away. And this building cannot be held in limbo when there's been a stop-work order for years. Those are my submissions, unless any members of the committee have a question.
All right, I think we have a question. Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Barassa, I'd just like to ask you a number of questions so I get this clear myself. On the application for this hearing, the owner is listed as synagogue.
I think I'm having the issue I was having before. I cannot hear the member who's...
Can you hear me now?
It's an interruption. Now, this is the issue I was having before.
Can you hear this?
I think he's trying to resolve it.
I'm happy for you to try again and see if it works.
Can you hear me now? Can he hear you? Can I come and talk over there?
Should be the same, yeah.
Okay.
I did look it up on the Application Information Centre, and there was a name. Don't ask me what that was, but it wasn't synagogue. I believe you're right, Carol, there was a... TZ, yeah. I was gonna say... Very odd. Yes. We don't have a chat function on this, do we? I think we have the ability. All right.
Could I just offer some comments?
Sure.
In the meantime? Based on the last submission, it sounds as though TLZ is the owner. TLZ is the owner of the particular property. And that should have been stated as the owner on the application. My understanding is that TLZ also has a board and the board acts for them, and that this application was filed by the board, or through the board, by the applicant that we've got. Joris Tommy, I got his name wrong.
Yeah.
If that's all correct, I don't see the issue here that would prevent us from making a decision on the variance. When we started, I was confused by it, but based on all the information that's been given by both sides, it seems to me that we know who the owner is and the owner has asked that the application be filed. And we could render a decision on that application. And that's where I would, that's where I stand at this point in time, and I don't know how my colleagues feel.
Perhaps we could bring back the agent?
Are we in committee?
No, we're not in committee.
Yes, I just wanted to mention, this is Alberti Roshalmi.
Yes.
That I didn't put that synagogue, I don't know who did in the application. I don't know, this is not my... And the other thing, the lawyers, the first two lawyers brought up, it is not for safety, it wasn't mentioned for safety, it is for comfort. Wind came through with that open canopy that I mentioned was open, it wasn't closed. So now that we will put those glasses, it's going to be just like any other public building. You have a interim area so you can, people can have some relief from the wind.
Can, can I get, just get clarification? I'll ask you the questions I was going to ask the last person. Who owns the property?
Toronto Zionist Council. It's in, it's in the application in two places.
And, and the Zionist Council has a board of directors, correct?
Yes, yes.
The board of directors engaged you to make this application?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Did the board, do, are the board of, are they obligated to consult with the congregation on adding this and how does that all work? Was there any consultation done with the congregation and, or did they just go ahead with the vote on it themselves?
I don't know. No, the, the request came from the congregation. It's a matter, it's, you can see that such, such building, you don't have a entrance door with no, no support before, no area before to.
So in other words, the congregation supports this vestibule?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have Abby on speakerphone. I'll put him on.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So I heard, I heard the member of the committee's question. There is no obligation for the board to get approval from any sort of congregation or, or other group of people in respect of the vestibule. It's a decision that the board of directors can make as those in charge of TZC which owns the building. So there's no, there's no legal requirement for them to go and consult and get approval from other people. That may be the plaintiff's position, but there's no, there's no legal requirement to that effect.
All right, thank you. Do we have another question?
Did, did you hear my earlier questions to the applicant as to who owns the property and whether the board had instructed him to make the application? Did you hear that exchange?
Abby, can you hear the member?
Sorry, could you say, could you say that again?
Right into the mic, right into the mic.
Did you hear my interchange with the, the previous, with your, sorry, your.
Agent?
Agent applicant. I asked whether he could tell me who owned the building and, and that there was a board and that the board had basically hired him to make this application. And he said, yeah, he gave him the name of the, of the owner and he said, yes, he'd been hired by the board. Did you hear that exchange?
I, I only heard parts of it, but everything you just said is correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. Okay, that's good.
And, and I, I'm not sure if this came through. There's some indication somewhere in one of the city's documents that says the building's owned by a synagogue. That's not correct, but that's not something that the agent put on the application or TZC put on the application. I, I think that was an error by city staff and, and there's no issue with it from our perspective. There's no dispute that TZC owns the building. It's just an error in one of the documents.
Okay, apparently there's one other person on the call and it's the president of the TZC if we want to hear from them. Do you want to hear from them, committee? I, I think we've probably heard enough at this point.
Madam Chair?
Sorry, yes.
I'm not sure if I can raise a point of personal privilege. Would you grant me the indulgence?
No, you've had your five minutes unfortunately, so we are not able to at this point hear from you.
For the purposes of the record, I will just state that the ordering is to be that the applicant goes first in their entirety and then the respondent. So I've not had a time to actually respond to the applicant's complete submissions.
No, the, the, in, in the case of the Committee of Adjustment, the applicant goes first. That was Mr. Yurshami. Then we hear from people who are in opposition or in support and then we go back to the applicant and then it goes into committee. So there's not a back and forth.
Okay, I understand that. It just seems to be a deviation from what I saw before, but thank you.
There was a little bit, I think, because of technical difficulty, but the, the other lawyer was representing the applicant, so we heard from them jointly.
And Madam Chair, for clarity too, as well, you'll speak, you can speak again if they ask you a question.
Okay, no, I understand that. I'm just saying that both spoke for the applicant. So, whereas I spoke for, spoke for differing parties.
Yep, we understand. Thank you. All right. Does anyone have any further questions of Mr. Barasa or the applicant? All right. I think we'll take it into committee. Are we confident with that? Ms. Ankar, you're our silent partner there. All right, let's take it into committee and if you want to talk about it. Mr. Niffel?
Madam Chairman, I actually, the variance is before us is minor, reasonable, and I don't see a difficulty with its approval. The issue of who has the right to make the application, I'm satisfied based on the information that we've been given that this is legitimate application by the owner of the land. And on that basis, I, I'm in favor of the application and would be prepared to vote for the, in favor of the variance.
Okay, Ms. Martin?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with my colleague. I don't, I think the variance is minor in nature and I think we're muddying. There's, there's two diff, two separate issues here that don't actually relate to each other. So I think we have to look at the variance on its own, how it relates to the, to the story behind it and, and the other side of things is another issue that they'll have to deal with.
Okay, thank you. I think, Ms. Ankar, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I thank you, Madam Chair. I think I agree with my colleagues. I mean, looking at this, I thought, wow, what a, a simple application. I've looked through the history of it, but in hearing the complications on the side, I mean, I, I can't talk to the legal and sort of the civil matters that might be impeding and, you know, sort of impending on, on this, but I don't know that this decision, you know, to legalize a front vestibule has constructed is, is something that, you know, should be so concerning for an overall, you know, legal contextualization of whatever is happening between parties. And so I could only look at the file that has been brought forward and as Member Niffel said, I mean, he feels certain that it is a legitimate file and, you know, if that goes into sort of a further legal battle later on, I could, I, I'm here to just make decisions on what's before me and what made it through to my eyes to adjudicate. So I'm in agreement with my colleagues.
Okay, and I think I agree with all of you as well. I think if this were something that was more significant as well, like we were, you know, the application was to take down the building and build a new building and the validity of the ownership is being questioned, which we've had this in the past. But from what I can gather, it would appear that the dispute regarding the validity of the board of directors and who's operating on their behalf is, is not something that we can determine at our level. And I think that we have an application in front of us for a very minor variance and the biggest issue would be if it, you know, if something comes out in the future that it needs to come down, it's a vestibule. It's not something that is going to be of a significant impact to anyone. So I, I will stop there and hopefully ask someone to make a motion.
Yeah, I could make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve this application. I don't believe there's any other conditions.
No.
No.
All right. Do we have a seconder? Mr. Niffeld. All in favor. So that is four unanimous. The application's been approved. All right. It is 3:42 and our next session starts at 4:00 PM. So we will break until 4:00 PM. All right.
Does it work?
Yes, it does. I could hear it.
Can you hear it?
Yeah.
I got a good one.
Not online. Should we maybe deal with item 20 first?
We'll deal with item 20.
Okay. Item 20, I think we want the applicant. We understand there's a request for a deferral. Anyone in the audience on item 20? Nope, guess they're online.
Can you hear me?
Hello? Mr. Maisels? Hello? Seem to be having problems today connecting. Hello?
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, you could speak up a bit.
Okay, I thought I was speaking pretty loud, can you hear me now?
Now I can, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Let's start with your name and address, please.
My name, my name is Stephen Maisels. And my personal address is 333 Clark Avenue West. Thornhill, L4J47K4.
Thank you. And we understand you're requesting a deferral today?
Yes, do you need an explanation why?
Just a brief one.
Very simply, we have a school on Chesswood Road for 300, for 250 girls. And we've had the school there for the last 20 years, 2004. We're registered with the Board of Education of Ontario. And we give diplomas in this normal way. It's a Jewish religious school. It was a school before we took it over. And it on title says that it's actually registered on title to say that it's education tax exempt. We've gone through three years of trying to get this straightened out so that we can have a legal non-conforming use so that we can pick up the government program for daycare. We have had a daycare for the last 20 years. We've gone through all of the processes and everything else except that we've never been able to get with, together with the planning staff. And the planning staff came up with a report that made it look like we were a new school trying to start. And we have to sort that out. So we would like the opportunity for a deferral so that we can work with planning staff and get it going properly. We're working within the background, although we're doing the work ourselves, we're working in the background with Adam Leighton from, a planner that I think most of you are all familiar with. And he's going to help us work this out so that we can bring it back to the board in a proper fashion.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Now, I just wanted to clarify, we have councillor Pasternak listed here. We received a letter of support from councillor Pasternak in the package, but this says opposed. So what does that mean?
Actually councillor Pasternak just, from their office, just wanted to confirm that this application is deferred. They're good with deferral?
Okay.
Didn't comment on rate.
Thank you.
I should say that councillor Pasternak for the last three years has been tremendously supportive in our application. And, and we were the school that got shot up in the middle of the night, three times, by terrorists that have, two of them have been arrested now. And councillor Pasternak has been involved during that whole process in trying to help us.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? No, all right, let's take this into committee. Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, madam chairman, I'd like to move that the application be deferred to allow the applicant to work with the planning department in resolving the outstanding issues.
All right, thank you. And a seconder? Oh, Mr. Marzieri? And all in favor? That's unanimous? Oh. Ms. Sankar, were you in agreement? Ms. Sankar, are you there? I don't think she's hearing us. Wait a minute? Or are you still pondering? I don't think, can someone check Ms. Sankar's connection?
Can someone hear me? Are you all able to hear me?
We weren't before, but we can now.
Sorry, I can hear now.
Okay, we just, you're in favor of the deferral request?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, so that is carried. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, let's go back to item 21, do we have that applicant? Okay.
Through you, madam chair, I'm on the phone with the applicant, he's trying to connect to WebEx right now.
Okay. Do we, we have a written request from the applicant, do we need to have a reason? Okay.
Sorry, just wanted to double check, can anyone hear me? I haven't heard anything.
Yes, nothing has happened. We're trying to connect.
Just wanted to check.
That's okay, we're trying to connect with item 21, who have requested a closure of the file.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Basically, client noticed recently TPA will change the use for the parking lot.
Can I just have the name and address, please?
Will we start with your name and address, please?
Oh, my name is Li Jun Jing, or Regan Jing, it's from Nice Street.
But your address?
My company address is 280 Skimmer Avenue.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, peer later is our client, they know, they've been informed by the Toronto Parking Authority, the proposed Nice Street will be, do the housing development after a year. So for them, there's no point to continue the application or the COA for putting the mini harbour like this container there. So this is where we need to pull out the COA, cancel it.
All right, thank you. Any questions? No?
The question probably refund, I think there's no refund policy as soon as I got the hearing scheduled.
That's okay. I don't think we have any questions, we'll just take it. I don't think we have any questions, we'll just take it into committee.
Okay.
All right.
Sure.
So, would someone like to make a motion? Ms. Martin?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve a withdrawal of application.
Close the file?
Close.
To close the file.
I'll, to close, motion to close the file.
All right, thank you. And a seconder? Ms. Sankar? All in favor? That is carried? Thank you. All right. Let's move on to item twenty-two, 313 Hill, excuse me, 313 Hillmount Avenue. This is an application for a new three-story fourplex and carport with garden suite above. The variances are for main wall height, building length, building depth, parking spot location, access to parking spot, height of parapet, garden, and for the garden suite, sorry, rear lot line setback to an ancillary building, west lot line setback to platform, setback in angular plane, platform location on a garden suite, canopy height on a garden suite, canopy encroachment into required side yard setback, and height of an ancillary building. On file, we have a survey, revised plans dated November 17th, original plans November 13th, a presentation, transportation services memo, and four form letters of support. Do we have our applicant with us?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name, good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the committee, my name is Nolan Natali, and I'm the architectural consultant representing the proposal for 313 Hillmount Avenue.
And, Mr. Natali, what's your address?
My address is 1558 Queen Street East, Toronto.
Thank you.
Postal code?
No, that's okay.
Okay.
All right, so, do we have any, do we have people in the audience on this item? No. All right. I don't believe we have anybody here. Does the committee want a presentation on this? No? Any questions of the applicant? I had some questions, I had two questions. One was why the height is required for the main wall height, and also why the parapet is high, although I think I know the answer to that one now.
Okay.
But.
Should I respond?
Sure.
The, I, I, I'm assuming you're referring to the, the height of the main wall?
Yes.
The first variance. It is, the zoning sets the 7.5 meter wall height for flat roof buildings, even though the permitted building height in the area is 10 meters, and we're requesting the 10-meter main wall height to align with the allowable building height, and that allows us to provide better livable space on the third floor. And we've used, we're using kind of the design itself with step backs and articulation to ensure that, you know, the scale is appropriate, and that the building fits with the neighborhood character. So, related to that 7.5 meter building height for buildings with flat roofs, the other variance related to the, to the parapet height is measured from that 7.5 meters. Kind of misrepresenting the actual height of the parapet, because it's actually measuring the entire wall above 7.5 meters. In fact, the parapet is only 300, 300 millimeters, which is standard, and that's where that discrepancy comes in. We're looking basically for the 10-meter allowable building height for the building itself.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Marzieri?
A follow-up question with the same variance. With duplex, triplex, and fourplex, you're allowed to go up to 10 meter, why this is still a variance? Is this because you didn't set back by 1.4, that is the boiler, or is something else?
Shall I respond?
Please, yes.
Yes.
This, this, this is a variance that falls into the category, into other similar variances related to sloped roofs, and currently, these are all being considered, reconsidered, they're under review by the city. Basically, the 7.5 is in there as a device that allowed the city some kind of discrepancy or opportunity to, to kind of moderate the size, the look of a three-story building. What happens is, if the, if they say that this, that the building height is allowed to be 7.5 meters, the main wall height, it means that after 7.5 meters and up to 10 meters, you can still have a building height of 10 meters, but it's going to require you as a designer to do something, either step back the wall or slope the roofs. And you can see many examples of the Mansard-style roofs on houses around the city. And that's, in their mind, at the time, city believed this was a way to kind of control the massing of the height, to, to make them more, blend in with what were single-family neighborhoods, like this one. But you can see from the, well, we're not looking at the presentation, sorry, in the presentation, there are some photos of adjacent houses and buildings in the area that don't use that kind of formula, have, have, have been allowed the variance to go to 10 point, to 10.0 meter building height. And it's fairly common, and it's, that's enough. Oh, you see?
I got my answer. You don't have to go further.
Yeah, the next, the next slide shows some pictures of, I'm sorry.
Page four.
Page four. Yeah. There are some images of kind of neighboring houses that are doing basically what we're proposing. What we're proposing is, is a way to deal with that massing, so that it doesn't look like a big, solid, 10-meter-high wall. And we've done that by, you know, adjusting the kind of building faces, stepping them back, adjusting building materials, adding canopy lines, all that help the building just, just take on a character that is very similar to the single-family houses that are there, but we're providing five housing units, which, which is.
Yeah, I think the boiler is there to allow more livable space, so I understand that part, and this, this is the only variance that was concerning, but I, I got my answer, so.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? No? All right. We'll take this into committee then for decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, comments? Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I really, I'm impressed with this application. We've had a number of multiplexes, fourplexes, that really challenged their fit into the community, an existing community, and in some, many cases, they were not very successful. This application has done so much that's right. For one thing, it's a corner lot, which is a more appropriate property, I think, for fourplexes than an internal lot, because there's a bit more flexibility with what you can do in terms of placement of, of elements. The, as the applicant indicated, he's undertaken a number of measures such as changes in material, redesigning the fronts and sides, so that there are extensions and, and recessions into the facade, the use of canopy lines, which I think are very successful in this case in making the building look shorter. And finally, and I think probably the most importantly, he doesn't have an external fire escape, which in so many cases is such a huge introduction into neighborhood, and very, very difficult to integrate into context. And the, the garden suite in this case is basically a garage with very little of the main floor dedicated to living, and it just provides access up to a suite on the top floor. I think it's a commendable application, and I, I hope a lot of people see this as a model of how this form of development can be comfortably a fit into an existing context.
I would agree with you, I had a few concerns about the height, as I indicated, but I also, on the other hand, thought it was a really good design, and sensitive, and particularly the garden suite, I find a lot of the garden suites we see are not very well thought out, and I think this one is quite good, and I agree, it's, I think it's a good location on a corner lot as well. Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. If my colleagues haven't got any further comments or concerns, I'd like to move approval of the application with only one condition, those approval conditions suggested by the Transportation Department.
All right, thank you. Second by Mr. Marzieri. All in favor? That is unanimous and carried, the application's been approved. All right, item 23, 273 Cranbrook Avenue. This is an application for a new detached garage to replace the existing garage. The variances are for rear yard setback, lock coverage of an ancillary building, percentage of soft landscaping, floor area of all ancillary buildings. On file, we have a survey, plans, photo, and an arborist report. Do we have our agent?
Yes, Joe Doe, 133 Torresdale Avenue, agent for the owner.
Thank you very much. I can't, oh, I think we have a, I just want to confirm, there's nobody here on this item? No, all right, and we don't have anybody online on this item.
We're confirming the person that we had the same issue in the morning, maybe a few minutes.
Sorry, the, that second, that's wrong, right? That's an error?
Possibly, but we're confirming already.
Okay, all right. I mean, I don't think we need a presentation on this one. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant while we're just confirming whether that other They're not, okay, good. So we don't have anybody on the, on the application, no residents. So unless anyone has questions, we can move into committee? Yes? Okay, good. Let's move into committee. Ms. Sankar, did you have your hand up?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, I, unless anyone, you know, just have anything else to say about it, I, I do wish to make a motion. I think it is, from my view, looking at this, pretty reasonable. I understand what's being put forward. Can I proceed with a motion then?
Yes, I don't think anyone will stop you. Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll, I'll motion to therefore approve this application, I think it does meet the four tests, and that will be, nothing further.
Great, thank you. Do we have a seconder on that? Ms. Martin, thank you. All in favor? That is carried. Everyone was in favor, so the application's been approved. Okay, item 24, 87 Hillmount Avenue. This is an application for a three-story, a new three-story dwelling. We have variances for building height, lock coverage, building length, and building depth. On file, there's a previous decision from October 23rd, '25, a survey, site plan, plans, cover letter, a presentation, site tree photo, tree protection plan, community planning report, urban forestry memo, and five form letters of support, and one additional report. All right? We have our agent with us.
Yeah, good afternoon, I'm Jim Faffler from 95 Sinclair Avenue West. So, if you could pull up my presentation, I'd appreciate it. So, yeah, we were here back in October, and we had some variances approved, but not all of the variances that we needed to construct this house, so I'm here to kind of finalizing, getting the approvals that we need, you know, to construct this. As, I think one of the major issues at the prior hearing was that we had had discussions with staff and come to an agreement about what was appropriate for this neighborhood, but unfortunately, that agreement was never communicated to staff, or to the committee. So now, you have on file, staff report, you know, saying that they have no concerns with this application. We also have six letters of support from neighbors in the immediate vicinity, which just go to show that the homeowners here are long-term residents of this street, and also valued members of this community. If you go to the rendering, you know, the homeowners, they're building a large house, they have a large family, and they've chosen this 140-foot-deep lot to build a house that's appropriate for their needs. On the first page, looking at the rendering, I want to point out a couple of things. We are asking for a height variance, the first page, please. We are asking for a height variance, there is a third story there, but you can see that that third story does not present at all to the street, there are no dormers in the front. We have, as we often do, a very minimal garage door, so there's no impact of that garage door on the street, and the house, two stories with a pitched roof is how it presents with that front door right at grade. There's a driveway that you can see in this rendering. Underneath that driveway, there's an extended basement which holds one parking spot, but there's no extended basement elsewhere at the front or the back, but that extended driveway or basement does contribute to the length. On the next page, the site plan, on our site, I've actually highlighted where that extended basement for one parking space is on the front. You can see also in the site plan, the house to the left, 91 Hillmount, the house, a couple doors to the right, 83, as long or longer than what we're proposing. So you can see that we fit very comfortably in between these houses along this block and in the greater block, as I'll show you later. We're asking for coverage variance, what we're seeking again, very much in keeping with other approvals that you see on the street, like 140 Hillmount for 42%, 97 for more, I'll show you pictures of this house, even up to 47 just around the corner. On the next page, you can see this whole block in an aerial photograph, our proposal is in the sort of top center of the block, and you can see there's a very eclectic pattern of front and rear setbacks on this block, but we're very much in keeping with that pattern that you'll see on the street, and the pattern of open space in the front and back of houses along this block in the immediate context. On the next page, to put this height variance into context, the house we're immediately beside is 3.2 meters higher than the house that we're proposing, and if you go to the next page, you'll see that house, 91 Hillmount in a photograph, so we're transitioning down to that house, and then, on the next page, you'll see that house, 91 Hillmount as well, you'll see 97 Hillmount, which is a larger house, it has a bigger lot coverage variance, 93.7 than what we're seeking, and you can see the next page. And you can see, next page, please, that house, 97 Hillmount, actually presents as four full stories to the street. So what we're doing is a much more, you know, less massive sort of presentation than other houses, such as that one, which this committee has recently approved. On the next page, you'll see the existing rear yard conditions. You can see this existing lot is in the center, it's got an elevated deck. We've got a rear terrace, but it's going to be on grade, so it's going to be a meter lower than what you'll see there. You'll see other elevated decks in the area. What we've done at the back is actually very respectful of the neighbor's privacy. As you can see, maybe if we go one more image down, I'll point out a couple of things. We've been in discussions with a neighbor at 94 Hillmount. We've agreed to plant a privacy hedge along the lot with her. And looking at that house, the as-of-right condition on the top right, the proposed on the bottom left, you'll actually see, if you take a close look, you'll see more of the wall of that house in the proposed condition, that house to the right, which is just a reflection of the fact that the roof we proposed is set in, it's actually less massive in terms of a sky view perspective than an as-of-right house with projecting eaves. So I'm not sure if that's my five minutes yet, but I have a feeling it's pretty close. I'm happy to take any questions on this kind of reduced proposal that we're coming to you with the staff support, letters of support from neighbors, and, yeah, kind of really hoping to have rounded things out with everyone here.
Mr. Marziani.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeffer. I think I was one of the members sitting in that panel, and we refused these four variances. I'm happy that you have the staff support now, but if we approve this application, are you okay to tie variance number 2, 3, 4 to the site plan since it's reflecting the underground footprint?
Absolutely. We'd be more than happy to do that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Pfeffer, the application was before committee previously, and the very four variances that you've got before us today were refused by the previous panel, two members of which are on this panel. Can you explain what's changed?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. So in the prior notice that went out, so when I appeared before the committee the last time, I did say, oh, we've come to an agreement with staff, and we've reduced these variances. So the notice of decision that you'll see reflects the same variances that we're here with today, although the notice of hearing didn't. So we shrunk the length by about half a meter and the depth by about half a meter, and we also reduced the lot coverage, which is over 30, 43% in discussions with staff. But, so staff had come to an agreement that what we were doing was appropriate, and I think Mr. Marziani at that hearing even said, you know, this would be okay to approve, given, you know, if we knew that staff was in fact in support, but that support had never been communicated from staff to the committee. I think another thing was, is that the prior notice said that we were seeking a variance for, from 30% lot coverage, whereas in fact, we're only seeking a variance for 35, from 35% lot coverage. So the delta seems a lot bigger in terms of that variance, and then there was no sort of documentation for the fact that that was the case. And, yeah, and then I think as well, you know, I think we've taken greater steps to just reassure the community or the committee here that we've really made a great effort to get support from the community. And if you go, I think, to the very last or second last page of the booklet, you'll see, you know, the stars from letters of support. So the difference is really, I think, at the prior hearing, it was a concern that the experts at the city, the planners, had not weighed in. And I think Ms. Sankar Beralta had also, you know, mentioned that she wanted a little bit more context about how this fits in with the character of the neighborhood. We've done a little bit of greater sort of research on the variances in the area, and I think I hoped to have spoken to that a little bit more in my presentation, just in terms of those patterns of open space, front and back, and the other very similar coverage variances that you're going to find, both in the immediate context, but also in the kind of broader neighborhood here. So it's a mouthful, but that's, I think, the difference here.
But to clarify, the four variances are numerically exactly the same?
As the variances in the notice, which were modified on the floor, but different in the notice of hearing. But the notice of hearing that would have gone to the neighbors were greater on those, on length, depth, and coverage. So, yes.
That doesn't, I don't want to belabor it, but it doesn't jive with what I see before me. I see that, excuse me, the committee had before the number of variances, and they approved some, and they didn't defer because they were concerned that there was something missing. They refused, flat out refused, four variances. And the four they refused are numerically exactly the same as what we have before us today. And I find that odd, that you'd come back with exactly the same thing and expect an approval. I must be missing something.
Yeah, I mean, as I had mentioned, member Marziani had actually, Marziani, Marziani had actually said, in, I think he might have seconded the motion, or he spoke to it anyways, that had he known, or had he had some kind of insurance, that there was support from the planning staff for these variances that we're seeking, that kind of expert imprimatur from staff at the city, that it would have been, and I think he said, an easy approval. And I think Ms. Sankar Beralta had also, you know, I think, definitely spoken to the fact that not having, you know, that assurance from staff, in terms of communication from staff, that that would have made a difference. And I think if you take a look at the notice, you will also see that in terms of the lot coverage, the variance was, in the old notice, was from 30% to 42, and now it's from 35 to 42, which I think you'll agree, is a difference, you know, is absolutely a difference, and a very real difference. And I think the committee at the prior hearing didn't have any assurances to that effect. So at the last hearing, member Sankar had made a motion to basically act according to the staff report and refuse those four variances. So the motion, you know, not to belabor the point, but the motion was to act in accordance with the staff report, and in this case, we have a staff report which says, you know, we have, as a matter of fact, I think we've got the letter from staff right here, says, "Hi, I wanted to send a quick email regarding this file. Planning staff have no concerns regarding this application. The applicant has worked with the staff since their previous application and revised their application as noted in the Provide zoning notice waiver to reduce the lot coverage, building length, and depth variances," which is reduced, not from the decision, which reflects the reductions I made on the floor, but the reductions in the original notice and the original application that went to the committee.
I have a comment. So just two comments here. One is the variance five, it still lists 30% of the lot area. It doesn't say 35%, just so that went out to the public with that information. And the other thing, can you explain to me, the 42% lot area, does that sort of cover the underground parking, which increases it to 42%? Is that why it's up at 42, or can you explain that?
No, unless the lot coverage is the area of the building, and unless, wait, unless I'm mistaken, it doesn't include the building.
Doesn't include the basement, then? Okay, thank you.
But, yeah. But I mean, similar variances you'll see, you know, in the context, that are not uncommon at all. And we do have a list of variances in the neighborhood in our announcement, or our third and last page. And I recognize that it's not, you know, just a raw number in terms of context, in terms of, you know, it's a precedent, but in this case, I think that coverage is deployed in a way that fits very comfortably between the houses on either side. It's an appropriate massing form, it presents to the streets, you know, it's two stories with a pitched roof. So it's actually a fairly compact deployment of that lot coverage that I don't think has a really significant negative impact on the neighbors. And I've talked to the neighbor off to the east side as well, and done those things like arrange for landscaping. We've told them that we'd put in a privacy screen on the balcony on the second floor. There is no balcony variance before you. If you want to make that a condition, you know, happy enough to see that. But we really worked with the neighbors, both immediately and in the broader context, and of course with planning, to come with planning support today.
Any more questions?
I have one more.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so what is the length and depth of the building site, the building and building site, taking away the underground parking?
Good question.
Yeah, so the length of the sidewall of the building that we're proposing is 20.17 meters. And that's, you know, in contrast to, say, 91 Hillmount, that has a sidewall length of 23.86 meters. I think 83 Hillmount, the front rear depth is, or length is about 23.8. But our sidewall, which discounts both that underground garage to the front, and then it discounts the breakfast area, which is single-story elements, central in the back, is 20.17 meters. So that's a little bit beyond that depth, the permitted depth of 19 meters, but not that much. And then the breakfast area itself is, yeah, it's under three meters, it's about 2.95 meters. So, yeah, but I think it's, the impactful length is the side of the, and there you're looking at basically 20.17.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further questions? No? All right, let's take it into committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, as Mr. Pfeffer mentioned, and my signature is on the vote, yeah, we didn't have the staff support at that time, and I'm comfortable, and I'm happy to see that the applicant worked with the staff, and they have full support of the staff. I believe the length and depth, that was my main concern at the previous hearing, all is a reflection of the basement extension.
Yeah.
So I am comfortable to move a motion to approve this application and tie it to the site plan.
All right, thank you.
With the urban forestry condition number three.
Okay, thank you. Seconder, Mr. Nipfel. Thank you. All in favor? That is carried unanimously. The application has been approved. Item 25, 89 Finch Avenue West. This is an application to modify the existing three-story building by constructing second and third floor additions at the rear of the building. There are variances for lot coverage and gross floor area. On file, we have a survey, plans, revised site plan November 3rd, 2025, minutes from September 26th, 2019, and site photos.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi. My name is Wagadi Kadris. I'm an engineer with Pyramid Engineering, Inc.
And your address?
Eighty-nine, the building is 89 Finch Avenue West.
Right, but your address?
My address is 15 Wortham Court.
Okay, thank you. Do we need, do people want a presentation on this?
Could I just get a clarification where the addition is? Because I find it a bit confusing from the drawings.
Sure. I don't think we need a full-blown presentation, but if you could maybe, would you like us to put up the site plan? We've had a question regarding where the actual additions are. It's a bit confusing.
Oh, yeah, we have a building permit to install the...
Having a little trouble understanding you. Can you try to be clear and speak into the microphone?
Yes. Can you hear me now? We have a building permit to install an elevator outside the building to improve the facility in the building, and also to split the third floor into two suites. It's a very large suite, 2,300 square feet, and we, by this, we improve the facility of the building. Now, the whole building was built to open a Christian bookstore, Bonner Stone Bookshop, which has been operating for the last 20 years. A beautiful store if you want to visit. And it has been serving the community for the 20 years. Now, bookstores, as you know, they are not money-making projects. It's unprofitable. So we depend on the income from renting the second and the third floor. And we installed the elevator with the building permit, but we wanted to square the building by adding 18 square meter to the southwest part of the building to each floor, the second floor and the third floor. And that would improve the accessibility to each one of the floors. You know, when you put the elevator outside, you need an access, to build an access to each one of these two floors. And that dictated that we want to add these 18 square meters to each one of the floors.
So can I just clarify, this drawing, the site plan, the elevator is enclosed here, and then on the second and third floor, there's an expansion or an addition that goes out in line with the elevator, so there's an overhang over the parking lot. Is that correct?
Yes. This second and third floor drive to facilitate an access to the second and the...
Yeah, no, that's fine, but they overhang part of the parking lot, right?
They do not take any of the parking spots. It's an overhang, yes. So the ground floors have no expansion.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Do we understand the application? All right, let's take it into committee.
No, you go, you go.
Okay. I can, I can support this application. It's not taking away any parking. It's, I think that the variances are minor in nature, and it's making the project a better, better place. So I can make a motion to approve this application.
Thank you. Mr. Nipfel seconded that. All in favor? That is unanimous. The application has been approved. Number 26, 280 Upsum Downs Drive. This is an application to convert the existing detached garage to a two-story garden suite. The variances are for rear yard setbacks, west side yard setback, angular planes on the west, and rear yards. On file, we have a survey and plans and photos. And we have an applicant.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and the committee members. My name is Abhishek Rajgore and I will be presenting a presentation for this application.
And your address, please?
Our address is Unit 28 and 2355 Dairy Road East, Mississauga.
Thank you. I'm not sure, do we want a presentation? I don't think we need a presentation. There may be some questions for you?
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions? No? All right, apparently no. We'll just take this into committee, okay?
Okay.
Mr. Marziani?
Through you, Madam Chair. I think it's a straightforward application, four variances, and I think it clearly meets its four tests, so I put forward a motion to approve with no condition.
Thank you. Seconder, Mr. Nipfel. All in favor? That is unanimous, carried? Do you need a break? Anyone? I think we're okay. Does staff need a break? All right. All right, item 27, 10 Aster Avenue. This is an application to construct a new dwelling. The variances are for north side yard setback, south side yard setback. On file, we have a survey, plans, site photos, applicant supporting material, excuse me, Metrolinks comments, and several letters of objections from neighbors. All right, is this why everybody's here in the audience? Ah-huh, all right. All right, well, I guess we will start with a presentation, please.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Ali Shokery, 326 Shepherd Avenue East. As you can see, we are here only to request reduction of the two side yards. If I can have my supporting material displayed, I can explain the rationale behind it. The first page of my support material shows the existing condition. On the north side, number 12, if you zoom out, please, the existing side yard of number 12 Aster Avenue, our neighbor, on the north side is 51 centimeters, which is less than our proposal. When we see that the center that marked with red, those circles shows the existing side yards of the proposed lot, number 10 Aster, which is 60 centimeters on the north side, that is what we are keeping as a variance for a new wall. So if we were to renovate this house, we could keep that wall and not ask for a variance. The house to our south, number 8 Aster, if you scroll down, you can see the existing side yards, 48 centimeter to 31 centimeter. And on the other side, on the south side also, they have a side yard of 76 centimeters. So both together, the cumulative side yards of number 8 Aster is, on average, 1.16 meters, which is substantially less than what we're asking here, around like 38% less for a lot that is 17% wider. So if you go to the next page, I have shown some recent approvals, only recent approvals of the Committee of Adjustment in the area that, the red circle, the property is the subject lot, those highlighted in purple in the close proximity, the neighborhood, those are only the recent approvals. We didn't go like 10 years, 20 years, whatever. And just looking at this context, you can zoom in and see how dense this neighborhood is with regards to the side yards. 1.2 meter side yard requirement for this neighborhood, for these narrow lots are not nearly adequate. I'm sure you've seen anybody else that wants to develop within that area come with some sort of variances they require. For sure, side yard variances plus some other variances. In this case, we're just asking for the side yard. If you go to the next page, that's more detailed, showing only the Aster Avenue. Next page, please. And you can, you can again see the context of only Aster Avenue. I think you missed a page or maybe the second page, I don't know. There is a, there is a photo or maybe you're not looking at the, at the most updated support material. So most of the side yards in Aster Avenue, they are, they're very dense. And maybe you can scroll to the, to the bottom of the supporting material, there are some photos, you can refer to that. Or simply just use the most updated one. So yes, this is, this is number 10, on the left, yeah. Or, yeah, this one is good. So this is, this is perfect, yeah. So if you go one page back, that is the existing, that blue outlines the Aster Avenue, all the houses. And if you can zoom in, those yellow arrows are pointing to very, very small side yards. Majority of the houses have side yards. So now if you go to the next page, you can see, yes, that's, to the left is the subject property, 10 Aster, 12 is on the right, and you can see the generous side yard that we have here between, between the two houses, which is going to be maintained and that is rare in the neighborhood, let alone the entire block or maybe in Lee Side, usually we don't see that that much of side yards. So we're going to maintain it and that wall, you see on the number 10 Aster, is where we want to have a new wall constructed. If we keep that wall, we don't have a variance on that side and the majority of our variance on the, on the, on the north side, that 60 centimeters, is related to that wall, while on the other side, we are asking for only 20 centimeters or so. If you turn page to other photos, you can see, yes, the other neighbors, this is number eight, which I explained to you, between number eight and number six is just, just over one meter, maybe 1.2 meter. Just turn pages and then that, that gives you an image of what's happening in the neighborhood, that number 47, where I've shown that that red arrow is like about a one meter. Go to the next page. And you can see basically, yeah, that's the same house and you can just keep on going to the other pages. After these photos, I have provided the evidence for those approvals in the neighborhood. If you can go like maybe 10 pages ahead and you can see the evidence of the approvals. I have highlighted the side yards that are granted to very many houses along with so many other variances that we are not asking here. And that, that takes a while if you want to go, I mean, we came across several thousand pages, we just showed a few of them here. If you go back to maybe page number, page number 13 of my support material, I'm going to explain why we are asking for these variances because the, the design is actually very sensitive. This is, this, this house, I think it belongs to Lee Side. It's not one of these new sort of builders' developments that stack up two floors or even three floors over the garage. We have a garage on the main floor with very few steps going into the main floor, not, not, like, most of the houses, including the old houses in the neighborhood, have more steps getting into the house than this. And that was a requirement from my client who I admire building this house. They tried to gain whatever square footage they had on the main floor without stacking the house up on the garage. If you go to page number 68, that's the front elevation of the house that we are proposing. And you can see that, that, that is, at least to my understanding, the neighborhood favorite. It's just one modest house with one car garage, entrance door, and a second floor. And to my surprise, this house with the 2,800 square foot is complying with the FSI, although we don't need to comply with the FSI because it's a duplex, but it is complying with, with the FSI. We could actually put another full story above that second floor, it would still be in compliance. I'm sure you have seen many of these. We are allowed to go to three-story and the FSI is not a matter here, but we are complying even with the FSI, although this is a duplex. If you turn to the next page, that delineates, like that red line is, is the builder's favorite sort of development where they have larger garage, elevated entrance, two floors stacked on top of the garage. Just turn to the next page. This is, the next page is, for example, this is another, an example with the address of the same type. Next page, please. Same type, next page. Please, next page. Yeah, this is what we are trying not to do, next page. This is what we are trying not to do, next page. This, this house, the classification, no, just, just go back or even this one, this has the classification of the house that we are, well, it's not going to be looking exactly like this, but these are the same classification, a small garage, fewer steps at door entry, one floor above the garage with a slope roof. And we've done more sensitive sort of design because the roof has better presentation, presence than, than these houses. Next page, please. This is an example on the construction with the address that we don't want to do. Next page. Same, something that we don't want to do. And if you go to the last two pair, two photos, it shows two of the houses on Aster Avenue. These are not what we want to do yet. This is, this is 37 Aster Avenue. What we're proposing is very similar to this, garage entrance door, second floor, slope roof, and a lot narrower than this, even with the help of the, of the side yards. So once again, I, I think what we're doing here is that the side yards actually are helping us to develop the neighborhood's favorite concept without raising the house, without making a big mess and that, just looking at, looking at the context that we could have had that side yard, the major one, the 0.6, the first variance, we could have had it as of right if we renovated the house. That then, that that variance is going to be, be removed. And we don't want to do that because the integrity of the house, my client prefers to have a new house with a new wall, that's better for them and that's better for, even for the sake of the neighbor, having a new wall with beeping tile and properly, their energy is better. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks a lot for being patient with me.
Okay. Questions for the applicant? Anyone? All right. I guess you can sit down for now and we'll hear from the neighbors. We have quite a few neighbors here listed and I believe maybe a few of them are online as well, so I'm just asking whether there is a spokesperson or, please, you're welcome to come and speak, what, give your comments, but please try not to repeat each other if we've already heard the comment. You know, I think we get the point. So if you could respect that, that would be great, but I don't know who wants to come forward first. Welcome. Just make sure the microphone is on.
The light is on, does that mean it's...
Yes, it's on. So if we could start with your name and address, please?
My name is Donna Ross. I live at 14 Aster, which is two doors from the property in issue.
Okay.
I have some process concerns, so we wanted to start with those first. And I'd first like to speak to the initiating document, which was the original application. Now, that document, which was dated October 23, suggests that the then-owner, Nicole Keating, authorized Nargaz Narsiri as her agent to file the application. Now, I know Nicole. She's 90 years old. She has serious medical conditions, more seriously, she has cognitive issues. But she would have noticed that her name was misspelled on the application given to her to sign. However, the Nicole that I know would be unlikely to understand the document. I submit that the original application is defective on its face. I also draw your attention to the first tree protection bylaw. That was filed October 22. I'm curious as to who signed that. It is not to my eye the same signature as the original application. I would urge that the panel compare the two signatures. I also note, by the way, that it's incorrect to state, as that declaration does and the later amended one, that no city tree or private tree will be damaged or cut down by this proposal. It appeared to us by the documents filed that they would be damaged indeed. Now, I realize that the application and the tree declaration are now listed as updated and they're new. They are, I guess, filed by the current owner. They were posted on the website December 1st. But I submit that's too late. We're here today because of the defective original application. And that flawed document, which resulted in the setting of a hearing date, cannot be cured after the fact. So I would urge you to dismiss the application. I would also like to speak to the question of notice, which is an important question for the properties that are but and all of us. There was no mailed application to any of the 35 residents' households on Aster. Nevertheless, the public hearing notice states that it was mailed on or before November 12, 2025. I would ask, who was it mailed to? None of us got it. And yet I'd point out that I did indeed get mail during that period of time, but did not get the notice. And none of us here today got it. So that hearing notice is incorrect on its face. So I'd like to address the notice that was given. There was a sign that went up on this property November 17. There was no previous sign for sale for the property, no previous notice on the property. However, the agent, Nargaz Narsiri, had signed the city's signed declaration on November 7th. Well, I ask you, why wait 10 days to post it? I would suggest, I would submit that perhaps it was to make effective objection to this application near impossible. It certainly is not reasonable notice.
Madam Chair, why don't you just pause the clock? Remind the speaker that she has almost a minute left now and has not spoken about variances.
Thank you. I submit that this hearing has been improperly called. First, the document appointing the agent was fatally flawed and there was no reasonable notice given in this case. Both, I submit, go to the authority of this panel to reach a decision. I urge the Committee of Adjustments to reject this application and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? The speaker? No? All right, thank you very much. Next.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Leighton. I am the owner of 8 Aster Avenue, which is immediately next to the dwelling being considered for this application. As discussed in the materials filed with you, in particular the letter filed by the planner Terry Mills, as well as a separate letter filed on behalf of virtually every resident on this street, there are many reasons that lead the neighbors on this street to conclude that the development proposal for number 10 is not a duplex. on this street to conclude that the development proposal for number 10 is not a duplex. And as the next-door neighbor to the proposed dwelling, we are concerned with several issues that may have been overlooked. Number one, the proposed parking arrangements. Our driveway and number 10's are one of the few places in Lee Side where both driveways are immediately adjacent to each other, separated only by a narrow grass strip, roughly one meter, measuring roughly one meter. Given that most Lee Side families have multiple vehicles, parking has long been problematic on our street. It is often difficult to find parking for visitors or tradesmen, and getting out of one's driveway is sometimes impossible. One of our neighbors actually parks on the street each morning just to ensure that they can get out of their driveway during the day. If the proposal were actually to result in a duplex, as they claim, there would be two families in this structure. Realistically, the parking pad currently being proposed would not suffice for a duplex situation. Our driveway at number eight would end up being used constantly to get in and out of the new construction, whatever it turns out to be. Number two, misuse of the waiver process. The waiver application reveals two side variances being sought, and that's just change, but these of themselves are not minor. In fact, they exceed any side variances previously sought in the neighborhood. Especially given our cheek-by-gel existing situation with number 10, we submit that the variations are not minor. The side variances also increase the fire risk to our home and number 12's by reducing the distance between our roofs and structures. Even our ability to access, access our homes to maintain them would be compromised. The characterization of this dwelling as a duplex is being misused, and the waiver application allows the disclosed variances to be minimized. The applicant wants to be automatically granted increased building height and length in order to build not a duplex, as has been claimed, but rather a monster home. The variances that would be required to permit this dwelling's proposed height and length based on plans filed are most certainly not minor as they significantly exceed that permitted under RD zoning for single-family dwellings. This application should not be approved. Approving an application that will result in construction for too large, too large for the lot will result in the appropriation of our property rights and the quiet enjoyment of our property. Our privacy will be infringed by the overlook proposed, and the increased risk of flooding would be severe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Nope. Thank you very much.
Sorry, can you hear me? I am, my name is Shane O'Dwyer. I live at 12 Astor Avenue. My family and I have been there for the last five years. And to preface this, I'd like to state that my wife and I agree with our neighbor submissions concerning number 10 Astor Avenue, despite my focus being on the height and length of the proposed build. That said, the variances required for the proposed construction are in no way minor and will have a major and permanent effect on my family's lives. The proposed building measures 10 meters high, when normally 8.5, and 19 meters long, when normally 17 meters. That is excluding the protruding balcony. The proposed 10, the height of 10 meters will dwarf all houses around it, showing a lack of reverence for the history and the aesthetic of the neighborhood. When purchasing 12 Avenue, one of the appeals was the original facade of many of the houses in Lee Side, were still intact and maintained. Something we expect would remain the case, considering how old the neighborhood is. The houses in the neighborhood are soon nearing the century mark, which means it's going to be important that, more than ever, that our historical buildings and neighborhoods remain intact. An increase in height of this magnitude will also impact the amount of light our backyard receives, and our shared fence line is south-facing. Unlike the beautiful shade provided by trees, an overly large house is absolute, meaning we permanently lose valuable sunshine, especially during the cold winter months. The moonlight that comes through my south-facing window at this time of year will no longer brighten my stairwell. That tranquility I will deeply miss. The proposed balcony will eliminate all privacy my family currently enjoys in our backyard. And as a father of two very little girls, I find this incredibly and inappropriately invasive. Never mind, my backyard will likely be rendered useless during this construction. While 10 Astor's backyard is unkept, the natural overgrowth is quite a beauty to behold. A large lilac acts as a natural partition between our properties, providing shade during the hot summer months. The beautiful magnolia blossoming every spring adds to the green space we fell in love with in this area. These beautiful trees will certainly be cut down to accommodate this new build, especially given the extended length of the proposed house. Destruction of the neighborhood trees is a big issue for us. Lee Side is known for its thick clay soil providing great nutrients for the trees and plants, as there has been a dramatic increase in larger homes, pools, cement, and other non-permeable landscaping in the last decade. Flooding and stormwater management has become a very big issue for the community, and especially along the shared backyard line at 10 Astor. A larger house footprint will continue to add the serious flooding issues we are experiencing as climate shifts and the weather patterns. This, this will increase the flooding and infrastructure damage to my home. And with that, I submit that you deny the request. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Just, just a point of clarification generally. We have two variances in front of us today. Those are for the side yards and the first two speakers. Well, the first speaker had some questions about the validity of the application. The second speaker did address that. So in terms of other people coming forward, we are not deciding on whether this is a duplex or not a duplex, and whether there's permission for it. It is permitted. And the only thing we are considering are the side yard variances. So just want to manage your
Understood.
Expectations on it. Thank you. You can still come and speak. I'm just reminding you of what the variances are for. And if you could stick to the variances, the concerns regarding the variances.
Well, thanks for the opportunity to address the committee. My name is Peter Hatches, and I live at 23 Astor. I think you've truncated my speech. It's going to be pretty short. I will say, on behalf of the residents of Astor Avenue, we unanimously object to this application. And I will say, I know you don't want to hear it, but I'm going to say it. We submit that the characterization of this dwelling as a duplex is for the purpose of creating a bigger, single-family home. And by characterizing the proposed dwelling as a duplex, material variances that be required for single-family dwellings remain undisclosed. Hence, I don't have the ability to talk about it.
You can talk about it. I'm just saying, we only have two variances in front of us. We're not determining whether this is a duplex or not, or whether it's permitted or not.
Well, then I think you have to let me-
It is permitted by the zoning bylaw, and we have two variances for side yards. So that is the application before us. So I'm just, want you to understand the authority of the committee on this application.
Well, then maybe you let me, give me an opportunity to speak in uninterrupted basis, and then we go from there. So the submitted proposal treats the secondary suite and the finished basement as a secondary dwelling unit. And that applicant uses that treatment to characterize the dwelling, this home, as a duplex with increased maximum building height and building length. But the dwelling is like many of the adjacent houses on our street. We all have finished basements with similar configurations, secondary suites, formalized basement spaces. They're all within the permitted maximal single-family zoning. So in this regard, is the general intent and purpose of the official plan maintained? Test four. We submit this proposal doesn't satisfy the provisional housing objectives. The city's housing vision expressed in the plan, this proposal does not provide for affordable, middle-market housing. Far from it. It's an argument of convenience to call this a duplex. The proposal is for the construction of a luxury home with approximately 4,500 square feet of finished space. Space with four upstairs bedrooms, all with en suite bathrooms, as well as a finished basement, a sauna, a walkout balcony from the master bedroom. That is not a description of affordable, middle-market housing. We also believe the proposal fails to observe official plan, which specifies the development in neighborhoods. We'll respect and reinforce the existing physical character in each geographic neighborhood. So is this proposal desirable for the, inappropriate for the development of the site? Test two. We submit the proposal is not appropriate for the development of the site, given the exceptional size of the proposed building. It doesn't fit nor respect the existing physical characteristics that are consistent along Astor Avenue, a very important feature of our neighborhood. The building's floor space, the building's floor space index is 0.49 times the area of the lot compared to the maximum permitted floor space for a single-family dwelling of 0.35 times the area of the lot. That's 40% increase. 40% is simply too big. The building includes a different building treatment, which includes anomalies such as increased roof scape, which is larger than the current pattern of roof scape in the neighborhood. It has more pronounced pitch, and this is going to increase the water runoff to the houses next door and make their flooding problems even worse. In effect, number 10, the proposed dwelling, will be offloading its flooding risk to number eight and number 12, and they're real issues. I got a minute. I'll say one more thing. The application, have you heard a little bit about this? I'll just reinforce it, but do very quickly. The application includes a zoning review waiver, which avoids a formal zoning review by the city staff. Now, we know this shortcut is susceptible to emissions and potential to overlook significant issues. We submit to you, this is an important decision. So on behalf of the residents of Astor Avenue, we ask that you consider this very carefully and that you reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No? All right. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward?
Good afternoon, committee members. My name is Bertha Knox, a 40-year homeowner from 24 Astor Avenue. I, first of all, want to say that I agree with what my neighbors have presented already. We have discussed it, and we are unanimously agreed. My concern is how this proposed building at 10 Astor would majorly affect the environment that we live in. We want to preserve the huge, healthy maple tree on the front lawn of the property under discussion. Their proposed design puts this tree in danger because of the extended hardscape so close to the tree's trunk and over the major roots of the tree. There is the beautiful trees in the backyard also, which would be sacrificed. It is just not feasible to do this construction and preserve the tree. This must stop. Lee Side was designed 85 years ago with boulevard-lined trees which make it an attractive family neighborhood. We have managed to preserve the legacy. So let's do the right thing and leave this precious canopy of trees for future generations as we face ever-increasing climate change problems like flooding and excess heat. The second environment concern I have is the massively reduced softscape of this lot. The front of the building will be moved forward, and the hardscape has increased to accommodate more cars, leaving too small a softscape. The same at the back, with a huge looming extension taking up 50% more softscape, plus a large patio that then leaves too small a percentage of softscape. We need softscape and trees to absorb the water. Number one, coming from the roof of the house. Number two, coming from the neighborhood because the contour of the ground slopes down towards this area from the north, the east, and the south. And from the extra precipitation which we have been experiencing. This would protect us from increased flooding due to climate change and help preserve us from the heat through the tree shade. The building is definitely too large for the lot size without due consideration in further proportions. Preserving our green environment is critical. So I appeal to you to give way to this consideration in your decision to oppose this application. And one question, if I may. What do we do if this turns out not to be a duplex? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? No? All right. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Are we okay? Nobody else here? Anyone virtually online? Okay. Let's move to those people.
Hello?
Hello? Who is this?
My name is Jeff Cattell. I'm co-president of the Lee Side Residents Association. And of course, in summary, we're totally in agreement with the deputations that you've heard today and the-
Sorry, Mr. Cattell. Sorry. Could you just give us your address, please?
Yes, my, with the Lee Side Residents Association, 6301 Bayview Avenue.
Thank you very much. Continue, sorry.
I'm a 40-year resident of, of the community myself. As you're aware, this application has generated considerable concern in the community. Its scale and the short notice received, and which you've heard about. The letters, there've been at least 10 letters submitted, as well as the letter from the counselor and the Lee Side Residents Association. And the, the, one of the letters contains the signatures of 34 households representing all but one, and the other person actually wrote a letter, a separate letter. I think what you're, you're seeing, committee, is an amazing demonstration of democracy and involvement and engagement, which is, is very much to be commended. They, they bring a wide variety of concerns which I, which you've heard, ranging from the physical to the social, the hydrological, and the emotional. And the, I will not reiterate those at this time. I simply really, I will focus my comment on one key issue, that is, it's a waiver. I have been involved in committee of adjustment for many, 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 many years since retiring, and the use of the waiver is always suspicious. The, it, it means there's no zoning review. I, the application assumes that it is a duplex. And, and there is nothing that the applicant has provided to back that up. There's no planning or architect's report. The residents have submitted an architect, a planning and architect report by Aris Consulting, Terry Mills. I would, I would request that you consider his report and, and not the- and not the, the one-line assertion on the, on the replacement application that it's a duplex. This is not a duplex. It's a single-family, a large, single-family home with a basement apartment. And as such, you're being gamed. That's what it amounts to. So the, I would simply request that you either defer the application to get to a zoning review or more simply, you just refuse it. This is a time to listen to the community and the assessment that they have provided for you. This is a remarkable display of democracy, and I urge you to take it very seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Speaker, no? All right, thank you very much. Who else do we have?
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. Thank you for giving me time. My name is Catherine Shaw, and I live at 37 Astor Avenue. I'm actually one of the homes that the applicant's put in his presentation to show you. We've lived on the street for 18 years. We purchased our house, already renovated, and we, like our neighbors, have done over the years, everything we can to maintain the original look of our home because our street is, is unique and that we have maintained the original look. But I would ask you, I'm in full support of everything our neighbors have said, and I would ask you to reject this application. The distance between the homes is not sufficient. We do suffer significant flooding on our street. We personally had a flood again last year because the groundwater has nowhere to go. So even, so that, I would just implore you to please reject this application.
Thank you. Questions? Nope? Thank you very much. All right, do we have a few more? I believe?
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. I'm Tracy Jennings. Our family has, lives at 36 Astor Avenue, and we have done so for more than 28 years. I'm speaking today on behalf of our family to communicate our strong opposition to the supposed minor variance request at 10 Astor Avenue. And our, our Leeside homes are small, our lots are small. And many families like ours have renovated. We have 35 houses on our street, including the two front on Sutherland. You know, 2425 had renovations already, a few other smaller renovations. Those renovations, except for a couple, and it's interesting that Mr. Nazari also focused on a picture of my house next to 38 Astor Avenue in support of the side yard variance. But I will say that that building was built without the approval of committee adjustment. And I couldn't do anything with my family about it after the concrete foundation was poured and the residents then came back and asked for forgiveness. So I would implore the committee to take that, take some of the comments that Mr. Nazari said, which are not factually correct. I want to speak to the properties that we have done. They're not too wide, not too high, not too long. They don't have pavements in the front. They allow our, our kids to go and play and run on the street. They do not have a second-floor balcony. They don't, they, they really have been done in a way to understand that our neighbors and these very small lots have an entitlement to their privacy, and it's important for us to protect that and allow those neighbors the use and enjoyment of their lot. So exceeding the percentage is a, is a significant issue. I know that bylaws are important and they're designed to protect our community. I also know that it's committee's requirement to really look at balancing the, the property owner's right to do something. But to do so in a way that will not contribute it to no unacceptable adverse impact, and I would encourage you to say that this does. You know, I feel our precedence really set on the street, and we want to ensure that the committee understands how important it is and my fellow neighbors to keep the facade. We've kept the heritage. We kept the Leeside face. We're very much a, a community. When you drive down our street and you see how carefully we've maintained, our renovations are done very well and in conjunction with that. So zoning bylaws in the city are really important. So when I look at the four items that have to be approved, I don't believe that this variance is minor when you consider the variance. I don't believe it's maintaining the, the intent of our official plan. It's also not consistent with the zoning bylaws, and it's not appropriate for the, for the development in the area. Further, personally, I just want to express my worry that a committee approval of these two minor variances will have a major impact and negative precedent to the entire community. Sending a precedent that will allow an individual to come along and say, I can just have a duplex, or even if they do have a duplex, could lead to major negative impacts to our, our broader community. We, I'm very concerned with already the, the level of densification that we've had in our, in our neighborhood. You know, two days ago, I was walking my dog on South Vale, a three-way stop with flashing red lights and a car. I had to pull my dogs back because the car did not stop at the stop sign. So balancing, you know, the, the approval, if it is a duplex in a neighborhood which is not done in accordance with a way that respects the neighborhood that it is in a way, I feel is setting the wrong precedent. And I feel our precedent is set on our street in terms of not allowing this bylaw. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No? All right. Next? I believe there are two people left, is that correct? Okay.
We are meeting Margaret Rockingham.
Hello? Mr. and Mrs. Rockingham?
I, you can probably hear me.
Yes.
My husband's upstairs on a computer. And I don't think he has got the capability. He seems to be doing something. I actually didn't ask to speak because I thought our neighbors covered this very well.
Okay.
And I think it's very important to realize that some of those diagrams that the gentleman used, actually, the lot widths vary significantly from house to house. So that some of what was looking in the pattern was actually not showing you driveways. I noticed that with my house. We, one of the near-over driveways, and it made it look like what was built on that lot was actually the property lines and not the driveway. And I'm just letting my husband know. I'll see if he can hear you or be heard. Chris, they're asking if you want to speak.
No, I don't want to speak.
Interpreting, okay. He's happy as well with the presenters already from our neighborhood.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, do we have one person left, I believe?
Yeah, muted, Caroline Murray.
Carolyn Murray?
Yes, I'm here. Hopefully, you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. I, first of all, I do want to thank the committee for allowing myself and other neighbors to gather here today, and I appreciate your time. I know it's been an extremely long day for you, and there's been multiple submissions of documents. And so I do want to start by saying thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've listened very carefully to all of my fellow neighbors, and I have read carefully all of the documents that have been submitted. I'm only speaking for myself. My husband and I both registered. I will say that we are in agreement with the position put forth by our neighbors, and we don't wish to add anything at this point, but thank you for the opportunity.
And sorry, just to confirm, your, your name and address?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I went through quick, too quickly.
That's okay.
It is, it's Carolyn Murray, and I am at 27 Astor Avenue.
Thank you very much. All right. Did we hear from Gillian McCabe?
No, but I do not see her online.
And she's not here, correct? No? All right?
Also, Carolyn Dosell, which is, I believe she will be in person, but I don't know if they, they want to talk or not.
Oh, okay. All right, yes, I see that. Carolyn Dosell, not here, correct? Okay. All right. Okay, let's bring the applicant back to address the concerns that have been raised.
Thanks for the comments. I know I have only five minutes, so I try to answer the most important ones. And other than that, if you see anything that had planning merit, feel free to, to ask me the questions. First of all, the, the planning department is, has not contested this, neither the forestry. So with regards to the trees, we are fine. We kept part of the existing driveway so that we don't endanger the tree that we, we love it dearly. It's going to be staying there. And the, it was mentioned, I think Mr. Leighton mentioned that there's not enough parking. And currently, there is not enough parking on this lot. We are very, very, very happy that we are adding one garage, and then there is going to be the driveway accommodating another one. And he also mentioned that two families are going to be too many. I am very, very fortunate that my client didn't take the path to put a four-unit plus a garden suite rental on this property. It would be, to be honest, if I was a neighbor, I, I would be very, very not happy. I think Mr. Haged mentioned that it's a 40% increase of the, of the floor space or GFA. I, I doubt it, but in any case, I mean, we can, without asking for further variance, increase this floor area by significantly to, up to, I calculated it to be 4,500 square foot, something that we didn't do. This house is a very small house, 2,800. I highly doubt anyone in that neighborhood these days build a house goes for that, such, such a reduced size. And we, we didn't do that. As I mentioned, we don't endanger any tree. The, Mr. Patel mentioned that we assumed variances. Yes, for the sake of waiver, we did, we, we did our due diligence. We submitted a zoning review. We, we actually received a zoning review from the, from the building department that, that is actually supporting. There is only two variances. I submitted the copies on the file. Only, only two, and it is a duplex. And I, I think many of the objections that I heard by the neighbors is actually the, the point of strength for this. That's the reason we should do this. You know, it was, I think, brought up that the, the facade might, might be intact. And I think that's what we have done. I think there is massive experience in this room to, to judge my statement that this is, this is actually a very, very good concept for this lot as opposed to these stacked houses, like massive GFA. So I hear around this chamber many times that, you know, this is done for a profit or whatever, which I don't personally think anything wrong with that. But this house is other than that. This is a, this is a sensitive house. The other, the two variances, the, the larger one, which is the north side yard, as I mentioned, it is, it, we, we have that as a bird in hand, as of right. If we just keep that wall and renovate it, which my client is actually asking for your support to, to build a sound house. And other than that, there is only eight-inch reduction on the other side, which we, we reviewed it with my client, and we calculated every inch for this residence. And we came up with these numbers. There are so many other comments. I, I don't know if I, if I, if I have more time, but I'm happy to answer any question. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The request before us, just to clarify, is for two side yard setbacks. The other issues are not before us. Just the variances with regard to the setback. You've requested a north side yard setback of .6 meters and a south side yard setback of 1.0 meters. But your drawings indicate that the side yard setback on the north isn't in fact six, it's .61. And then the setback on the south side is 1.02. So your drawings indicate a greater setback than your variances. Can you explain?
Yes, sir. They usually and normally add, leave marginal space for the sake of surveyors. They, sometimes when they map the house, and this is like one centimeter on the north side, and I think two centimeters on the south side, this is for the sake of safe tolerance when they actually lay out the house during the construction. If there is a small inaccuracy, that, that will cover it so we don't have to come before you again for a minor variance. Yet, should you wish to change those numbers accordingly, we respectfully accept.
We can't change the numbers here, but I, I would just draw your attention to the fact that you're asking for variances that are smaller than your plans indicate. Your plans indicate that you've got larger side yard setbacks, and because they don't match, that could come back to bite you sometime in the future.
Well, if, if the side yard is, the actual side yard is larger than the, the variance, then that is, that is safe. It would be problematic if it was less than that setback. So if he had asked for 99 centimeters.
Yeah, yeah, fair enough. I just, I want to draw your attention to the fact that they don't match. The second thing, the, the application doesn't indicate it's a duplex. There's a note on the plans that says it's a duplex. But let's take for, for a given that it is a duplex. The access, with the, the access to the duplex is down the south side yard to stairs that go into an entrance into the duplex. That is the main entrance to that dwelling unit. It's obstructed. First of all, it's narrow. It's 1.0, 1.0 meters, which is very small for a main entrance. But it's also got a window well in it, so I would suggest to you that it doesn't work.
Yes, we actually have discussed that with the building department. We are putting grates over that window well.
That's still, it's dangerous. So, so part, the walkway's narrow to start with, and then you have to go over an open grate within a narrow walkway. That, that's not a really good solution.
I, I, I appreciate your comment. There is, what, what we try to do is to comply with the building code, but that is a building code matter. And in terms of complying with the building code, we did our due diligence. We spoke to the building department and the building code officers. They confirmed that a grate is acceptable for that, for that purpose. But now that you voiced it, I think we can make some modifications to the design perhaps when we go for the building permit, not to have any grate if you personally find it dangerous.
And I can't take credit for that observation. That actually was one of the objectors. It's in one of the objectors' letters that that walkway doesn't work because of the, of the window well. And I'm, I'm inclined to agree with them.
Yes, sir, I read that, and it is fortunately in compliance with the building code.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant at this point? No? No? Okay. Let's take it into committee.
Before doing that, may I make one comment? Just 10 seconds.
Very quick.
Very quick. I live very close to this area, maybe five minutes, less than five minutes. If I see this application in my neighborhood with, with the merits that I just explained, I would come here to support it, but I would... I would come here to support it, but I would, I would ask the committee to approve it, but tied to the drawings. Because nobody, I mean, let's say if you approve this, nobody's holding one, um, applicant to put another, another floor above it, as I mentioned, this house could be built, um, significantly larger than this. And, um, I, I'm, I'm personally very glad if, if one of my clients actually do this sensitive touch to the neighborhood, thank you.
Thank you, all right, let's take it into committee. If anyone wanna?
I just have a comment for my colleagues, I'm confused as to the definition of a duplex. Because this to me does look like a, it's got a basement apartment and a single family on the first and second floor. So, does a duplex, does that cover the definition of a duplex? Anybody able to comment?
I think it's the same, duplexes and secondary suite are the same.
I can't hear you.
I think duplex and secondary suite are the same now. Since they have the, uh, multi-unit, uh, applied, now it's the same. It used to have a secondary suite before, cause there was no multi-unit, uh, by law.
All right, uh, does that answer your question, Ms. Martin?
It does, but I think this has put the committee in a difficult position. That's my comment on that.
Okay. Uh, anyone else's comments on this application? Mr. Nipfel?
My only comment would be that, um, I'm, I'm taking it at face value that it is a duplex, and if it is a duplex, the main entrance to the second suite is from the backyard. Um, the only way to get through the, to the, to the second suite backyard is to go along one of the, um, side yards that were, have before us, and um, the one side yard is first of all not convenient, and it's only half a meter wide. The second one is one meter wide, and I would argue that it is obstructed by a, um, a window well and grate, and I, that's not an ideal way to, nor a safe way, to get to the entrance. And on that basis alone, I'm not prepared to support the application before us, because I think that the side yard setbacks are too narrow.
Okay, um, I'll put a few comments in. I think the design, the front of the house is sensitive to the neighborhood, I think that it, I think that it does, um, as the applicant indicated, you know, it's a better, uh, it fits in better with the neighborhood than the standard, dwelling with an integral garage that we see everywhere, every day. So I think that is good. Um, I too have concerns with the side yards because, and I think it's because of it being, if it is a duplex, it's allowed certain other permissions that make it bigger without variances required. So, to me, I, I always have a concern with side yards, I think that, um, just from a space point of view, notwithstanding the fact that lots of houses were built pre-buy law and they don't have the, for instance, the house, the existing house only has the point six meter. Um, but I don't think that's just justification for continuing that situation. And, and I, I have, still have those reservations about the side yards, which are the only variances we have before us.
I just wanna add to, to that, that given what the, my colleagues have said, I agree that it's not ideal, obviously, to walk over a window well or have a grate over it to get to the backyard. And if you come down the other side, um, well, it's, it's so narrow, and there's also two significant trees there that you'd have to create some sort of paved area there, which would knock out those two trees, and does that trigger a forestry review here? So. I don't think those trees will survive anyway with, there's a covered deck there, too close to it, too close to those two. I think one's a lilac and one's a magnolia or something, according to one of the speakers.
All right, um, any other comments? Um, Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, if my colleagues have no further comments, I'd like to move that the, um, the application before us be rejected, because I don't believe that it, uh, creates a, um, a safe or, or, uh, reasonable, um, development proposal, um, and I don't really believe that it, um, maintains the intent of the official plan for, um, the use of dwelling units.
All right, do we have a seconder for that motion? Ms. Martin seconds that motion, all in favor? Um, that is three in favor, opposed, Mr. Marziani, the application's been refused.
Thanks so much.
All right, uh, moving on. Oh, yes, how about a five-minute break, everybody? Thank you, we'll be back in five minutes.
Yeah. Yeah, of course. It's freezing in here, is it, don't? Okay, how many more? Okay. Everybody go for camera on? Sure you can.
Of course you can, yeah, can change anything.
Are we, uh, live? Thank you, we are back, we are on item twenty-nine?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, I'm sorry, sorry, that was missing on my list, four eighty-six Woburn Avenue. And one moment. Right, forty-six Woburn, this is an application to legalize a front yard parking space. Uh, the variances are for location of a parking space and front yard soft landscaping. On file, we have a survey, site plan, supporting material, and a transportation services memo. We have our applicant. Let's hope so. Oh, welcome. You've been waiting.
It's Brian Parker.
Okay, thank you.
I'm a land use planner.
And can we have your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Address?
Oh, my address. My address is First Canadian Place, Suite sixteen hundred. One hundred King Street West.
All right. This is one hundred Kind Street West. Days long, but I can still see the difference. All right, welcome, um, I don't know that, I don't think we need a presentation, anyone?
Okay.
I think we'll just take it into committee for a decision.
There are a couple of conditions tied to the transportation's comment, the, a site plan condition, which we're happy with, thank you.
Okay. Um, that must have been in the late comments, was it? No, sorry? Yeah, our bookmarks on this application are, yeah, I can, I can't access it, could we pull up the transportation, uh, conditions, someone? There we go. Keep going. There we go. Okay, updated site plan, yes, and you have no problem with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, now, let's take it into committee. Mr. Nipfel?
Thank you, Madam Chairman, this is, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
For the applicant, or, oh, sorry, come on back down, please.
Because it's one of the variances.
It's only got one variance.
I, I just want you to explain how you get fifty-five percent soft landscaping when you have a walkway and a, and the big parking spot.
The, the fifty-five, the... The ratio is fifty percent of your front yard has to be landscaped. And then seventy-five percent of the fifty percent has to be soft landscaping. And we are deficient, we are complying with quote-unquote landscaping, we are non-complying with the quote, "soft landscaping."
So, the two hedges are, are the soft landscaping, is that right?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I'll assume you're done your ask.
All right. Are we ready to take it into committee now? Mr. Nipfel, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I think this is a very straightforward and supportable application, there aren't many, um, opportunities to change anything, and I think it's quite reasonable, so I'd like to move approval subject to the transportation condition we just discussed.
Thank you very much, all in favor? That is, oh, and second, Mr. Marziani, I'm sorry. Uh, all in favor? That is unanimous?
Thanks, kind.
Application approved, thank you.
Now, we're on item twenty-nine, forty-four Banff Road. This is an application to construct a two-story detached dwelling and alter the use of the existing ancillary garage at the rear yard of the property.
Uh, good evening, my name is Tay Rook, I'm the planner for the owners of the property at forty-four Banff Road on eighteen Young Street.
Okay, hold on one sec, I'm still reading the application.
Well, sorry, I'm...
That's okay. Um, we have variances for building depth, north side yard setback, eve projection into north lot line, coverage of ancillary, ancillary structure, use of ancillary building for living accommodation, rear yard setback for ancillary building, south side yard setback, uh, coverage of ancillary building and vehicle entrance location. Um, and the, I will just note that the south side yard setback for the ancillary building is approaching point four meters into the abutting lot. That is on variance seven. On file, we have a revised zoning certificate, previous decision from March, March two thousand six, survey plans, supporting material, tree photos, urban forestry memo, and a late community planning staff report.
Madam Chairman, Mike, we also note that in the purpose, it's incorrect, it says it's a two-story detached dwelling, I believe it's a single story.
All right. Uh, let's let our applicant confirm that.
Uh, that is correct, Madam Chair, it should be one story, and it's reflected in the proposed plans that have been submitted to committee.
All right. Um, do we want a presentation, do we have questions? No?
They give you the staff report, but I don't have any issue with that.
Could, could we pull up the staff report, because it was a late one, and I don't feel like going looking for it.
It's not even in this one.
Thank you. Can't remember what it said. Okay. Uh, seven, let's see, eight. Can you just go to the, yeah, just go to the top where it explains, thank you. Lot coverage, all right. Um, so, to our applicant, what, uh, what is your response to the planning staff report?
Well, we were kind of surprised that we received this report, because we did have ongoing discussions with planning staff, and they were fully aware of what this proposal was. The only new construction that's occurring on this property is the one-story detached dwelling, uh, uh, that's replacing the existing one-story detached dwelling. Um, if, and what's referred to, uh, in variance number seven and eight is the existing garage that's located at the rear of the property, uh, that's being utilized for livable space. Um, if you look at my submission materials on my presentation slides, it's clearly outlined and indicated on slide number two. What you have there is the front of the dwel- front of the property, and at the rear, you'll clearly note that it says existing garage to be converted to ancillary livable space. And just to go through the variances quickly, variances one, two, three, uh, and nine relate to the front of, to the actual house that's being developed or being constructed. You'll note that there's a blue dash line which represents the existing dwelling that's on the property. The new proposal basically outlines or mirrors the existing dwelling, uh, uh, that's existing there right now. It's reflective of the existing side yard setback, which is one of the variances. And the other variance being for building depth of eighteen point one, eighteen point three meters, but, which is the yellow sliver, uh, located at the back of the, uh, left of the seventeen meter mark, but you'll note that the rear wall, the proposed dwelling, one-story dwelling is aligned with the, uh, the addition, adjacent dwelling at forty-six, which is to the north. So, from an impact perspective, this proposal doesn't exceed the rear walls of the adjacent dwelling, uh, on the north side. With regard, and in addition to that, there is variance number eight, which is related, variance number nine, apologies, which relates to the, uh, garage being located at the front. Um, you'll note that there is no front yard landscaping, uh, variance requirements as a result of this, there's no comments from transportation staff which indicate they have any issues. Um, and from a streetscape perspective, there are driveways and garages located at the front, which is common throughout this neighborhood. And just to give you a better context of what's happening here, is if you go to the next slide, sorry. There are some pictures that have been submitted, so that is the existing, uh, one-story dwelling. That's across the street, you'll see front yard parking pads, in addition to garages that are existing in the area. If you go to the next slides, you'll see the existing garage that we're speaking of that's being converted, so this is an existing structure that's been, uh, constructed, and permits were issued June of two thousand and six. The previous owner basically constructed this garage, um, and utilized it as some, uh, for his wife, who unfortunately passed away, as some, as a working area, but, once again, this is an existing structure that we're reutilizing, refitting for, uh, livable space. In terms of setbacks associated with this existing garage, um, it's existing there today. You'll note in the pictures, you'll see on the bottom picture, there's plenty of trees, brushes, and trees, and canopy that are existing in the area. Very well landscaped, and in addition to that, the rear landscaping area is also in compliance with the zoning bylaw. With regards to the comments from s- planning staff, this is an, once again, an existing structure. Um, it has no impacts onto the adjacent neighbors since, since two thousand and six. You'll note that there's no objection letters from any of the neighbors with regards to the encroachment to the adjacent property at forty Banff, which is the property to the south. Uh, once, there is a party wall agreement that was signed in two thousand and six, or two thousand and two, pardon me, which basically allows for the encroachment, uh, onto the adjacent property, and forty Banff also has no issues with this proposal. And we are aware of forestry's comments, and it's the standard condition number two, which we have no issues with.
Okay, um... I believe that, uh, planning's issue is with the encroachment into the abutting lot, number seven. And as a result, the coverage, I think, is linked to that, and, I think.
So...
Yeah, so the...
I don't, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
It's okay, I was just gonna say, it's the encroachment that gives us difficulty, because we can't approve things on adjacent lots.
It's not the actual garage itself, there is a wall that you'll see in the pictures on slide number... Pardon me. Slide number five of my submissions, or even slide number six. Slide number five will give you a better indication. Number five. Next one, thank you. Oh, one more down, sorry.
Down?
One more down, yes. There it is. So, the bottom picture, you'll see there's a wall, uh, attached to the garage, or very close to the garage. That's what's encroaching onto the adjacent property. There is a pre-existing, uh, encroachment, party wall encroachment agreement that exists between the neighbor, which is forty Banff and forty-four Banff, and that's been signed and executed, there's no issues with regarding that, and once again, this is an existing structure that has existed since two thousand and six, building permits had been issued for this, and no neighbors are in opposition to this proposal whatsoever.
So, that's a wall?
Correct.
Free-standing wall.
Correct.
And the garage is, the ancillary building is not attached to that wall?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a separate, it's attached, but it's a separate wall, so if the wall were to come down, there would be a wall behind that would be existing for the garage.
And the ancillary building, um, if you separate that from the wall, it has a zero point zero setback?
That's right.
Hmm. Do we have, does it show on a plan anywhere that delineation between the two?
Yeah, if you look at the site plan.
Yep. Okay.
If you look, actually, pardon me, you're correct, so portion of the garage actually encroaches onto the neighboring property to the, to the, at forty. So, it's actually better shown on the submission that I made, because I colored it, but you'll see, actually, the dash line on the left there, okay?
Here?
Yes. So, you'll see that there's the dash line on the bottom, which represents the wall of the existing garage, that's, so that's slightly encroaching onto the property. What was, what had happened was, between forty, which is the adjacent neighbor, and the previous owner at forty-four, uh, they, the, uh, the neighbor at forty constructed this party wall and signed an encroachment agreement, basically saying that there's gonna be a party wall between the, that is encroaching onto the, uh, adjacent property, which they have no issues with, and this is, once again, been pre-existing on the property, uh, between these properties since two thousand and six. And, once again, the existing garage, as it lays today, permits were issued.
In two thousand and six?
Next, June of two thousand and six.
And, and it received zoning approval, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, why do we get these applications at four o'clock in the afternoon? Um, which is now six twenty-six, sorry, it's just that it requires some brain power to process this. So, did you think about possibly building a wall inside the wall?
Well, once again, we're, my client is basically reutilizing the existing structure and str- and the wall, party wall. We're not constructing anything new here on the site, aside from the main house. So, from a, uh, from a neighbor perspective, no issues, from a setback perspective, uh, no issues, because that, once again, this is pre-existing. And the neighbor at forty is in support, as subject to the fact that no opposition letters have, have been submitted. Forty-six, which is the neighbor to the north, has no s- issues, and even the surrounding properties to the rear have no issues, because, once again, this has been pre-existing since two thousand and six. The only change that's occurring is, I guess, the technical labeling of this fact that this is an existing garage to be converted to living space, but nothing from a form factor, from a structural perspective, changes. The only physical changes that are occurring is the inclusion of landscaping in the rear, the driveway at the front, and the actual, uh, main house, which is a one-story dwelling.
So, this is why we need a, a zoning examiner on the case, because the existing, the building's existing.
Yes.
So...
We, so, you'll note that we did submit a zoning review.
Uh-huh.
A zoning review had been issued, and all of the variants that have been identified are the ones seeking today, and I did forget to mention, as per the revised zoning review that was, uh, submitted to committee on November twelfth, dated November twelfth twenty-five, uh, two thousand twenty-five, variance number four on the, on the notice, public notice, should be deleted.
The coverage...
Yes, it's essentially the same as the, um, variance number eight, but the zoning department basically took, uh, number eight as being the, the one that's applicable.
Okay. And so, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand why you require variances for an existing building, is it because of the conversion?
I, yes, yes, Madam Chair, that is what it is.
Doesn't make sense at all, because when you cha- it's just a change of views.
I know.
When you have an existing structure, why do you need, uh, variances?
Well, if you look at variance number six, uh, sorry, no, variance number, uh, five?
Yep.
Ancillary building as living accommodation, so that's a variance.
This is a variance, yes, but I'm just, I don't understand the other one, like the setback, the lot coverage.
And if you didn't have that ancillary building, you could put a garden suite in the backyard, is that correct?
Correct, correct.
But the, this doesn't make sense.
So, from a, and I, I, I leave this to committee, but we rely on, uh, building department to provide us with these zoning reviews, we did that through them, and this is the variant, list of variances that we've come, uh, come towards, and at the end of the day, um, we still have to apply for building permits, zoning has another kick at the can at this in terms of review, and if there's anything that comes up, or does something seem right, they could hold the permit or refuse the building permit, and we may have to come back, but at this point, we're pretty confident that these are the variances that we need to seek, and, and, in, uh, in committee's wisdom, hopefully, you'll, you'll, indicate that this is an appropriate proposal. Once again, majority of these variances relate to the existing structure or the existing garage.
Did you have any discussions about this particular issue, about this wall and, and so forth, with the planning department before coming here today?
We did, and they were aware that this was gonna be converted into ancillary space, they were aware of the encroachment, um, and we never got any indication that this was an issue, uh, from a, so they never, you'll note that in their report, they don't indicate that they have an issue with the conversion of ancillary space to livable space, but for some reason, they're indicating seven and eight on an existing structure, um, so I'm not quite sure where that's coming from. And we did have ongoing conversations, and they were aware of the party wall, they knew about the party wall agreement, and the, uh, encroachment that had already existed, and the fact that forty, uh, Banff was in support, and so...
But if you read the, if you read the planning, I mean, we're trying to figure out what they were thinking, if you read the planning department report, it doesn't sound like they're talking about an existing condition, it says, "Planning staffer of the opinion that the proposed zero-meter side yard setback," but it's not proposed, it's already there. And lot coverage, it's not proposed, it's already there, do not maintain the end ten of the zoning bylaw, and, um, and, and the minor nature nor appropriate development, which I agree with my colleague, I, I don't understand it.
I have a way around it, I think.
And, you know, I, I, you're taking my word for it, but I'm looking at a picture of the pyramid that was issued for the garage on June second, two thousand and six, uh, June, in June of two thousand and six, and the permit number zero-six-one-four-zero-eight-seven-two, uh, if that means anything.
Okay.
I have a comment, whether people agree with me or not. Um, they might have a co- a compliant neighbor right now, but houses are sold all the time. And, uh, I think it's really odd that there is a, a structure from the, you know, the, the application that's partly on the adjacent property. I would not support that.
And just to be clear, and I didn't, I'm sorry, I apologize, but just to be clear, and I didn't disclose this earlier, the owner of forty is the same owner of forty, of the actual subject site.
Oh, okay.
I apologize for not indicating that earlier.
That would be a good reason why you signed an agreement to accept it.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's six thirty, as you indicated, uh, my mind must be slipping as well.
It's okay, we're all slipping. Um, okay, my approach to this would be regarding variance seven is... is if we were to propose approval, we would um if, if it was agreeable to people, uh approve a south side yard setback of zero point zero. And ditch the, it's encroaching four me- point four meters into the abutting lot. So you get, you grant them a zero setback. They have to live with that. If they sell the property and somebody in forty doesn't want it, they'll have to take it down. You know, like I think, I think that would be, because the, the whole thing doesn't make sense why they have to apply for variances just because they changed the use. They're not establishing a new building. I guess there isn't a deeming clause in the Toronto zoning bylaw um that would deem a legally existing structure to continue. However, sometimes a use can trigger a change in that. So that would be my way to approach it. Your mic.
Sure.
Yeah, we could do that too.
Cause we did that in an earlier.
Yeah, yeah, you could do that. Great, we got an idea.
So that means that the owner approached himself to sign an agreement to allow an encroachment.
No, that's not true. Uh because you all, you gotta understand this agreement was signed back in two thousand and si- uh two, so uh or two thousand and six, or pardon me. So it was the previous owner.
Oh.
So it was the current owner and the previous owner that already signed this because the structure was constructed back in two thousand and six.
So who owns, who does, so the owner, the applic- applicant owns both lots now, you're saying?
Now they do, yes.
Yeah. Hmm, okay. They must have been good friends. All right. Um I, I think we, I, I don't think we're gonna solve anything by asking more questions at this point. I think this is uh we're having a, a very, yeah, hypothetical discussion here. All right, um let's take this into committee. And I don't understand why planning has a problem with eight for an existing building. Yeah, but it's existing. It's an unusual. And it's an unusual lot. And the fact that they have a bungalow, they're replacing it with a bungalow is, when do we ever see a, this is the first bungalow I've seen in two years, I think. Anyway, um yeah, I, I'm not sure planning grasped the application. But I'm not going to uh question it. I just don't agree with what they decided. That's my personal opinion. Does somebody want to attempt a motion on this?
The other comment is that the rear yard setback is not minor in nature. Whether the up, the guy, you know, to the north of the site agreed or not, right?
That's related to the house.
Uh which variance are we talking about? Oh, you're talking about six. That's.
Oh, the rear yard.
I technically were in committee. And we should mute our applicant, but. I know you were, I know. Um point two nine. So what do you mean, point two nine and one point nine five? That's.
It's again existing.
Yeah.
Um.
But if we did it to the, okay, scenario is, somebody else buys this property. They don't want a bungalow. They don't want the garage in the backyard. They're gonna blow it all up and build a new house. If we tie the approval to the um, Mr. Nipfeld mentioned it, to the, to the existing condition.
That's very safe.
I think we're safe.
Yeah.
Unless you have concerns with the existing building.
No.
All right, so.
Can we ca- is it possible to motion like to approve and tie to the, not, not to change anything with the existing other than the use?
Yeah. We, we did the, we did it for something else.
Drawing.
The site plan?
Well, the site plan, the thing is, they can still like um demolish the existing and build a new structure.
Um they could, but if we put the condition that it only, the, if the approval, if we were to propose a, an approval of the variances, that it only applies to the existing um structure. Yeah. Yes. Yeah, that would probably do it. Or you might have to just specify which those are.
Not gonna say something to the fact if the, if the lot is sold, then the variances don't apply. And they have to take down the structure so that they're not encroaching on other people's property. You know?
Uh I don't know. I mean, they're not. I wouldn't, anyway. The, the wording of variance seven is odd. And that's why I would modify it and say that it's just the zero point zero meter. Take the encroachment out of there. Then it's technically legal non-conforming, correct? If they applied for a permit and built it in two thousand and six, it's legal non-conforming. Well, it's legal non-conforming on this lot, on forty four Banff. Let's, can someone maybe start? And we, we can work on it.
I, I'm gonna mess this up. Or do you wanna?
It's okay.
I'd like to move approval of the application. Um with the variances related to the ancillary building applying only to the currently constructed building on the lot. And.
I think we need to reword variance seven.
And with variance seven worded that the proposed south yard setback for the ancillary building is zero, zero meters. Does that work?
No. That's not what? Well, it didn't.
You say that it's gonna be zero meters, then to me that means they have to change it. You can't allow the encroachment.
Well, and that's what they have to deal with.
Yeah.
Like we can't deal with the other property, forty.
What is, what, I can't, I'm, what is it supposed to be?
Well, the point four meters deals with another piece of property, not this property.
So they.
Deals with this property because it's a building hanging over the other property.
It's uh, so the requirement is point three.
Point three is the requirement?
Side yard.
Simon, if variance number seven was approved as worded, is that actually legal because it includes an im- an imposition on an adjacent property who's not here?
I couldn't answer you. You'd have to ask a zoning examiner. It's only enforceable at the, at the building permit stage, but I can't answer that question.
Okay.
But I wouldn't recommend changing that variance because that's the way it's written.
Yeah. I know. I know. Or. Or we approve it and we see what happens.
Or I'm not, well, I'm not approving.
Maybe I can try a motion and see how it goes. Okay, um so I forward a motion to approve the application. To approve the application, variances four, six, seven and eight um tied to the existing condition, site plan.
Ancillary building.
That's the ancillary building. So variance four, six, seven and eight are related to ancillary buil- building. And.
And you tie them to the existing condition?
To the existing condition and also exist, uh and the site plan and the urban forestry condition number two. Yeah, so they don't change anything with the existing, they just change the use, which is variance numbers five.
Yeah. All right. All in favor? That's three in favor. Against, Ms. Martin? Uh, Mr. Nipfeld? Yes. All right. All right, item thirty, one oh one Parkview Avenue. Uh yeah, this is the one with eighteen variances. Yes, new detached dwelling with an integral garage, front porch and rear deck. Variances for east and west side yard setbacks, electric charging outlet, west side yard setback to front porch, east side yard setback to rear deck. Building height, east and west side exterior main walls, number of stories, height of main pedestrian entrance above established grade, building length, front yard setback, lot coverage, area of a platform, rear deck, eve projections into west lot, percentage of soft landscaping. To sum that up, that was eighteen variances. On file, we have a survey, site plan, plans, site photos, urban forestry memo and a late community planning report. Uh, who's our applicant? Ms. Yi?
Ali Yi.
Hello?
Is unmuted?
Yes, could you speak up a bit? Little louder? Hello? Hello? We had her, didn't we? She's, she's on and she's unmuted? I just asked her to speak up. Can she hear us? Maybe that's the problem. Um can you, uh while we're waiting for the applicant, well, I guess we'll wait. Just gonna ask you to put up the planning staff report, but if she's coming soon, we'll go through the notice because I assume she's making changes to the variances. I got time to bring up the planning staff report, I guess. Yeah. This is egregious.
Through you, sorry. We have another person on the call with a phone number. We don't have a name. I'm going to unmute, so let's see, maybe that's the person.
Okay.
Hello?
Hello?
Hey, I use my phone.
Okay.
I use, I use my phone. Ca- currently you can, you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. Uh my name is Ali Yi. Uh my address is two four five French Avenue West. I present owner for this project at one zero one Parkview Avenue.
Okay.
Uh do you want me to pre- present or is it, is okay?
Hold on, let's, uh do you have any changes to make to the variances today?
Yes, I change, I change a lot. I currently, uh my reverse drawing exactly meet the staff reporter require. Currently, I thinking I delete item three, item five, item seven, item twelve, item fifteen, item eighteen. So this is all an item.
Okay, let's start with the public meeting notice. It's up on the screen now. Let's go through the notice. Oh. It was just there, wasn't it? Okay, got it. Let's start with the public meeting notice and um go through it one by one and let us know if you've made any changes to variance one.
Yeah, minus one, I ca- I cap it.
You're keeping.
Number two, I cap, cap, cap it. Number three is delete.
It's deleted. Deleted. Variance three is deleted, okay?
Yeah. Number four, cap it. And the number five will delete.
One sec, I gotta catch up.
And the number six, modify.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Just slow down. Okay, uh number four, del- is four key?
Number four is, yeah, number four is still cap it.
Okay, number five, you're deleting?
Yeah, remove.
Okay, six?
And the number six, number six from zero point six uh change to zero point nine meter.
Seven.
Number seven is delete.
Delete?
Deleted.
Okay.
Uh remove, remove.
Yep, you got that. Okay, number eight?
Number, number eight modify and eight point two meter change to seven point seven meter.
Okay, uh number nine?
And uh number nine is the same, it changed to seven point seven. And I also have a drawing attached.
Okay, nine is seven point seven. Same as, same as eight.
Uh yeah, but just the window cap a same height, same as in the drawing attached.
Okay, um number ten, I assume it's the same?
Uh number ten remain.
Yeah.
And uh number eleven modify and I change the number one point nine seven meter, change one point five eight meter.
Sorry, from one point nine seven to?
One point seven, uh one point nine seven meter, change to one. One point seven, one point nine seven meter, change it to one point five eight meter.
You were right, thank you. All right.
Yeah. And, and the number twelve is a remove. Number thirteen, thirteen remain. And number fourteen is modify. I change the number thirty-six point five percent, change it to thirty-two point eight percent by planner require.
Okay. Thirty-two point eight?
Number five, thirty-two point eight percent.
Yes, fifteen.
Fifteen is a remove.
Remove, okay.
Yeah.
Sixteen.
Uh, number sixteen and modify, I change it to seventeen square meter, change it to fifteen point one three square meter.
Thirteen point one three?
Fifteen point one three. One five point one three.
Okay, sorry, you're, sixteen is, you're changing from seventeen?
Okay, seventeen square meter, change it to one five point one three square meter.
Okay, Ms. Martin wins that prize, she heard it correctly. All right, seventeen.
Seventeen remain.
All right.
And eighteen remove.
Altogether? Okay.
Uh, seventeen, paper seventeen, and remove eighteen.
Yes, okay. All right.
So, so totally I have, I removed six main variances and modify six main variances.
And does that?
Currently, that.
Sorry, does that comply with the community planning report?
Uh, yes, there's each item discussed which are in the planner one by one. So everything that need to planner require, I revise the drawing. Currently, I thinking they have a new revised drawing there. In a.
All right. Do we want a presentation, or do you wanna just? Have some time to compute? Hold on, we're just, we're just thinking.
Some question?
No. Variance ten, you said stays the same. I think now, could we have the community planning report up, please, staff? Just to verify. Can you just go back? Just, just keep the list up of the changes, just so we can rationalize it with our list.
I think the changes are aligned with the.
Okay, thank you.
I double-checked one by one, so.
Okay. And then, okay, now, sorry. Was there anything else in the report about tying anything to anything?
There is a condition to tie it.
I don't know if it's up or down. There, stop, 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 too far. Down a little bit, there, thank you. East side exterior main wall, so, okay, what? I need to go back to the list. What was the wall height?
Seven point seven.
Oh. Oh, it's okay, I'm, I'm asking my colleagues at this point.
Revised it to seven point.
Seven point seven, okay. Uh, okay. I just need to see. Oh, wrong. 'Cause it's at the bottom of my screen. Sorry? Is she? Yeah, it's number five in the staff report. It's confusing, 'cause the staff report, the numbers are, yeah, it's been confusing. No. So she got rid of the height. I know, I totally, totally agree. Especially. She changed eight? Yes, and nine. Okay. You're right. Yes, it was a late one. I don't know, but we got it in the late package. I think our judgment is also affected by the time of day, so.
No, I, I think I totally understand the application, but this has to become with the revised notice. I mean, it's really difficult to go through one by one and then look at the plans like a day before. But I, I totally understand the application, I went through each change, and I think it's a.
Yeah.
Hundred percent compliant with the staff, so I don't have any difficulty with it.
Yeah, and I think it's, um. That said, we're here. Yeah, it is late. To make that many changes, however, it is what it is, we have it in front of us. Are we ready? Does anyone have any follow-up questions for the applicant? Yeah. I agree, it is quite high. The sixteen, that one, is that the one?
So you're suggesting to put privacy screen on both sides?
Yeah. I think we just do it, let's not even ask. Okay, let's, are you ready to take it into committee? Okay, let's take it into committee.
I can try.
Thank you.
Do I need to go through all the changes, or?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I have the list, I can go through that. It's very difficult assignment for this time, but, all right. Okay, so I forward a motion to approve this application as amended, so variance one, two, four, ten, thirteen, and seventeen to be approved. Variance six to be amended to zero point nine. Variance eight and nine to be amended to seven point seven. Variance eleven to be reduced to one point five eight. Variance fourteen to be reduced to thirty-two point eight percent. Variance sixteen to be fifteen point thirteen. And also variance eight, which is the east wall height, to be developed.
Not yet.
The deleted ones, okay.
Yeah.
I can go through this. So variance three, five, seven, twelve, fifteen, and eighteen to be deleted.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so let's go to the condition.
And then variance eight, you were saying?
Yes, variance eight, which is in regard with east side yard, side exterior main wall to be developed substantially in accordance with the revised east elevation dated November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, as attached to the staff report.
Yes.
Yes. And also with inclusion of privacy screen at the back on both sides of the deck at the height of six foot, or one point eight meter. And urban forestry, oh, there's no urban forestry.
Sorry, you said one point eight, or did you mean one point five? You think one point eight?
So privacy screen, we usually put it at six foot or five foot?
Five.
Five, okay, one point five then. From the deck level. From the deck level. And, and then.
And there was forestry?
I don't.
Two?
Condition two, yes.
Thank you. Well done. Seconder. Ms. Martin. All in favor? That is unanimous, carried. The application as amended has been approved. All right. Do we have a motion to, and I have checked this online with Robert's Rules of Order, to adjourn the meeting? There you go, I have taken my stance. A motion to adjourn? Mr. Nipfeld, it is seven oh four PM. I don't know if we need a seconder, but Mr. Marziani is happy to do so. And we were all in favor, including staff. Thank you to staff. Thank you to the committee members for today, it's been a very long day, but we accomplished a lot. Yes, please.